She was happy to show this while they asked you to do that. They were. Ready Donna?
Ready?
I am as ready as I've ever been.
Okay, this is a call to order. The most of town board meeting at six oh one P M. Do you say May twentieth? Start with the roll call please Kramer.
Here.
Tending via phone Ferguson.
Here.
Coons here Harris.
Here.
Service here. It's like we're all here. Thank you everybody else for coming tonight. Great to see y'all here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. May be seated. Okay, current agenda items. Do we have any changes? Anyone like to make?
Eric.
I just have a few items, but they're just discussion only new quotes and things that we received. And Dan was going to come and bring packets on all the stuff that he's quoting, but I can just cover that under. And I'll try to keep it short.
Yeah, okay, so it's it's already on here. Great, okay, so entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Like make that motion.
I'll take that.
Jen makes the motion Donna seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Question carries.
Get up this morning.
Very good. Okay, approval of May sixth regular meeting minutes. Anybody have any proposed changes?
I may mention you move on the sixth agenda. Regular meetings minutes is.
All right Donna makes the motion in seconds, here in seconds. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. If at any time tonight you have conflict of interest with. The topic at hand, please state your conflict of interest. Thank you. Town updates. It's like we have a town cleanup day coming on Saturday, April twenty sixth. Hey, seeing as it is May twentieth, that has already passed. Next one, anyone have any town updates if like to? Say no. Eric.
For that cleanup, I assume. Yeah, probably will come. We could probably cover. Some talk during the constituents on that, just if we remind them.
Okay. Joan, did you have any FEMA updates?
Um, no, still on track. Generator grant will be submitted hopefully the twenty eighth, but we haven't till the thirtieth. Just waiting for some environmental impact statements. And just some odds and ends like that.
Okay. Are we likely to receive those in time? If so.
They still often take a long time.
Alrighty. So do we can submit without receiving those?
Well, I think they will be happy knowing we have requested them. If there's a stat in there that said if requested or not received.
Okay, perfect.
Just requesting the day before of course.
Yep, yeah, I get it. Okay, thanks Joan. All right, next up engineer.
So, and I'll I'll add a little more from Ed Waters on. On team one. So first one is follow up to our last meeting when we talked about the. Railroad and and by the street so. By the railroad guy. Excited and was ready to do a P E which is owner engineering. With their. With their consultant. And so there's a process to that where we. Do a like an. Analysis that's done. So concept alternatives and analysis that goes to the railroad and then. That they say, yeah, we like that. Now, this this is what we would support. And then we turn around and before that goes into be a project. We hand that over to the Federal Railway Administration and ask them to pay for it. And so that's what this grant does is. It's every year. But when it's when it's a construction grant, it's a minimum of a million dollars. The money that they get the grant for. So one dollar, only a dollar minimum, but planning grants can be less. You know, they can be a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, and obviously if you look in your packet. And there's a page. I gave I gave you guys the color. Probably came out okay like I want to. This part right here where he talks about the program. And so what they're trying to do throughout the country is they're trying to eliminate at grade crossings. And so either you're going above the railroad. And in this case, it would be a bridge. That would be full length of the right away. Railroad right away, which I think fifty two feet in this case. And then. Twenty five feet high clearance that whole way. So we don't have any crash walls and things like that needed. Keeps the price down even though we're a little higher. So. No less than a hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand for planning is what we think. So that's kind of what we're going after is that one hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand in engineering money for planning. Which a lot of that money actually gets paid to the railroad consultant who does the. Assessment report and owner engineering. They actually basically say our engineer. Cost this and so we're at the end of our five year contract that that was finished. And so now it's another engineer from Olson that starts their five years. So. That allows us to work for you. And not have to do that on behalf of the railroad. So because we have we'd have to recuse ourselves if we represent the railroad. Or many projects. So this is a good time. Where we're still actually doing projects with them. They're finishing somebody else's starting new one. And so so that's kind of all the stars aligning in that regard because otherwise we wouldn't really be talking to the public. Projects coordinators who are in Florida. So the matching on this, I think I put it in here. I wrote a proper. Attachment pay. Eighty, yeah eighty twenty. So you know, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, then twenty thousand would be the towns match. It's two hundred and forty thousand, but the amount spent on to put it together, this conceptual and everything counts towards that. So this twenty nine, I think it is thousand would count towards that match. So you'd be all over half for. Three quarters of the way there. With your required match.
I have a question. Probably shouldn't even be talking about it now, but. What how how wide it is that going to be and how many steps are these kids going to have to go up to get on across?
So the width is fifty two feet. And then. We've got a hundred and forty feet to work with. So there's a hundred and forty feet that's the railroad property with. Within that, there's fifty two feet in the center. That's the the actual right of way that it tracks. And so that's where we want to go up and over. So we'll be able to do ramps and stuff. We've got.
Have something. So that these kids will be willing to go up all these. I mean, I.
It can be.
I don't understand how the kids are going.
Depending, it should be eighty eight compliant. So for handicap accessibility, so it would be ramps that would go up to the platform that will cross over the tracks.
So it'll be.
And then ramps down, yeah. Within the railroad property. So it wouldn't leave the hundred and forty feet. Yeah.
The grade on those ramps, I mean, that's even you can ride bicycle up those. So it's not just walking. They can ride their bikes up and over. Not that we should necessarily promote that, but.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, you know.
Might have to put up some no skateboarding signs.
Yeah, yeah, this this allows us time to like work out these conceptual alternatives. We don't have to sit one. We could go in with like three options, right? That's probably a good idea because then the railroad will have a chance to weigh in on what they like versus what we like. And you'll end up with one that everybody likes. So. That's why it's a little bit time consuming. You know, it's not just writing the grant, you're writing the project, the need. And the whole reason we're doing this is because kids are going across it. Tracks when the train stop. That's all our commercial properties. So that big red. Key shape is our commercial property. So from the standpoint of what is it for? It's stimulating also economic development. In that side of the town.
So then when we had a meeting last time, you mentioned that you were going to talk to him about moving this train that's sitting on. Been sitting across track for about a month now.
Yeah, yeah. So I haven't heard back. I did send an email. So I think that it goes through operations. So I've been dealing with public relations and with property management. So.
Guys on number one.
So the roadway master might be the best option. But yeah. A lot of its operations and there's a lot going on there. So.
Is there a specific acting you need from us tonight on this?
Yeah, I mean, we kind of have.
So we had.
Deadlines. Yeah, so the project. So the way it works is NOFO means notice of funding opportunity. And the NOFO comes out in October, but as you can see, they only give you seventy five days. To put this type of project together and then it's due in December. So we know that that happens every year. So we we need to start at this point in time. To have all these alternatives ready to go through things like you were discussing. Because we need it ready for, and we actually have to have G N W look at that. And at least to some extent, well, they're going to give us our E R A and our P E which are the two. They're like they they're the estimates, right? So you give them conceptual, they give you back estimates of what it costs to take it to the next step. That's what we want to have done before October. Because then the grant requirements will happen and at that point, we just want to be adjusting for this year's details in the grant. So. Jen, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just curious. Then the twenty nine eight. That the planning grant that you're applying for?
Yes.
Okay, and should we not get the grant? Then we'll just be responsible for that amount.
That's it. We'll only be responsible that amount and we can apply again with the same application without any cost.
Just updating dates and what.
What do you think the likelihood is going to be that we'll get it?
I asked our grant writer that because I don't want to waste anybody's money. And he said that these are pretty high on the agenda because of the traffic that we have here. And then it's pedestrian. So it's not a road a road bridge. So they're not that expensive. So they can do a bunch of them. And they're all about eliminating crossings. So I said like out of I got like, is it more than fifty percent chance? He said, yeah, it's like in the high sixty seventy percent chance. It's all about. How we, you know, we're going to we're going to copy off of successful grant applications, just like in other parts in the country. We did one just like in Pennsylvania. Finished it and was aborted. So best we can do is copy a success and. Made it to our location that will get us there. And then with the supportive railroad, which is another bonus. That should tip it over the edge.
So to whom are we applying for the grant?
Federal Railway Association Administration. F R A. And they're not really affected by any of this federal stuff right now. D O T is probably the least affected.
And in this. Statement, G N W is the name of the railroad?
Genesee in Wyoming. They own this railway.
Also, where where can we find the eighty twenty split on the documentation?
It's right here on the first page, lower right. Yeah, I put it in my proposal too, but this is a better document to understand the grant. This was put together by our grant writer.
So then it says it shall not exceed eighty percent. And we're not guaranteed you can get that eighty percent thing, right?
So not exceed eighty. Yeah, but eighty twenty is a very common. But so and planning grants are.
Is there twenty percent? What is the total project?
So it's between a hundred and two hundred and fifty.
The one question I would have is this, is there anything particular about us doing this this year rather than seeing if we can? Because we are spending a lot of money this year. A lot in my thoughts. Is this something we can say, all right, maybe we should look at this next year?
But the point in October. The deadline December, you you're not even going to know until next year, January or February whether you get it. And then. I'm assuming construction would be the following spring. So it'd be a year out anyway.
No, I mean. Right, to just basically delay this whole cross up for a year just until the time of.
Right, I'm just saying you'll actually be delaying in two years because this is once a year, correct? Or is this quarter like?
It's once a year. In the fall.
So then when would this twenty nine thousand be due?
Wouldn't be spending it this year either way?
Yeah, it would be as we, you know, not till the end of the end of the year or beginning of next year, when after we submit.
So then we submit and then we're. We would have to pay this to you guys for doing all the legwork and getting the submission done. And then we find out after that if we. Get the grant.
Yeah.
And then if we do get the grant, then that twenty nine thousand would count towards that minimum twenty percent. Our share would be.
That's right.
But I mean, we depending on what. Grant is, I mean, we could be on the hook for some more and we just don't know what it is, right?
Well, we would. That's up to us. So we can ask for between a hundred and two hundred and fifty somewhere in there. We can ask. And it's just had to make sense. Like we'll know we covered ourselves for the costs with the railroad. For their evaluations. We have to pay that amount. And then, you know, how how complex is that design? Would just, you know, determine the complexity of the engineering class because it's all engineering class, the grammar. I see. Yeah.
About twenty percent of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project would be fifty thousand. So twenty nine thousand would be another twenty, actually. Would you be willing to wait to submit the your bill until we find out if we get this project?
I can ask. I don't know. I've done that before, but.
It'd just be nice to take it out of the funding rather than out of our general funding until it gets reimbursed.
Right, right. Well, I was thinking it would be more for from our D V B. Money, the economic development money because it's accessing our commercial. Zone property. It's all all that's our our commercial until the east of the tracks. Then you could replenish it. You couldn't replenish it using your app lines.
That's something that, you know, it's in the budget.
Leo?
Just got a real quick comment and supported this. You might often mention that not only is it. For access to the school for your kids, but our current plan is for the new library to be on east side of the tracks. So it would be. Hold for a ship in the county fair. With the library be year round.
Thanks. That's a good one.
Hi, excuse me, can I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that if we can access the B and B and B funds, I think this would be a great use for that. The the library alone makes a huge benefit. And the growth of the town. I think it will help. I think it will help with all things for the town. Including including the fair. And, you know, they they have more the fair is getting. Fair board is is accessing the fairgrounds a lot more than they ever used to, which is wonderful. So I think I think it can be done that way. I think it's. Should be checked in too and should be a go myself.
Okay, thank you Linda. Jen?
Just one comment. I like that it's a reusable grant. So, you know, that it's using a good portion of the twenty percent that were required. Plus it'll be B and B funds, but also it would require very little change if we get denied and we have to reapply. And then the reapplication wouldn't be near.
That'd be very minor.
Yeah, very minor cost. So. We can reapply following year and following year. I mean, until we get it basically.
So usually our cost to do a grant, like a beginning cost is like the study of the new the NOFO. But because we do that anyways for several other communities. Doesn't cost anything. So it's just your particular document getting modified. So a couple hours, you update cost estimates and something else new.
But the whole. That plan change and the.
You want to add maybe a little more need, maybe something else came up that made another reason for it to be there pushing you over the edge. Something like that.
All right, when they're doing these pedestrian crossings, they're generally installing lighting.
We have to have a motion made. To start it, you know, stretch the process. I'd make the motion, move forward with that.
Shannon makes the motion that we move forward with this agreement. Twenty nine thousand eight hundred.
Be paid for out of the B V B fund.
Be paid for out of the B V B funds?
Probably next, it would be next year.
Okay.
Same B V B funds in two thousand twenty six.
All right, and Donna second. Okay, Shannon makes the motion, Donna second. Any further discussion?
Is that appropriate, Anthony?
Yeah, I'm writing a note here that our town will do a special thing on that job number that it won't get built till twenty twenty six.
No worries. We don't necessarily have to wait until we find out what things can tell us in our next.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, very good. Any further discussion?
Anyone second?
Right, so no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to have seen. Okay, carries. Next one up, Sima, did it support?
So we have an intern from Still Mines over the summer. And so I got some inexpensive labor that can help with some updates. She's really good. She's actually only got a semester left and she graduates. But our C mom has got to get updated and it actually will guide. You know, future operations of our wastewater treatment plant lagoons collection system. So. It's it's. Pretty old already and. Like then all the people that were there are not there anymore and. A lot of the facilities have completely changed. So the C mom. I tried to to keep the the cost of that as low as possible by, you know, utilizing our. Our intern to do different updates to the document. The EPA gives guidelines. So she'll go through all those guidelines. She'll go through our water worth. And there's a lot of stuff that's data input that needs to be done. Like right now, if you click on our sewer system. There's there's data that's not in the tables. So I'd like to see all that data in the tables so that way we can reference it to the C mom. We can even burn out documents in the C mom. So it's all tabulated from Silver Smith. So. I got her doing the roads actually. So give you a little taste of. She's been in here. You click on that. Layer, this is mine, but still, yeah, go to roads, put it on roads. There we go. So she built so far, she's done this road network. And so now you can click on each one of those. So you click on segment. And maintenance view. Now, when you're out with Dan, you can upload all that stuff that you're seeing the photos into that road. So Sierra did that, our intern. Cool. She's gotten pretty good at Silver Smith in the last week or so. And so she'd be able to update all our water and stuff during through the C mom. Nice, very good. Yep. I trained her on it by using the road, every road there. Well, so so, yeah, that's what this is. We're going to get a lot out of it because the tool, that tool is fantastic when all those columns are filled in. You know, so. And then we can get in compliance because I'm just waiting for that date when the N R says, hey, where's your C mom? Then we're now we're scrambling. So. I think they're good with us because everything's under construction out there right now. So they're just thinking, well, why bugging for the C mom and stuff under construction? They got a permit on notice. So it's just. Actually, they asked them, are we supposed to? Usually we pay for the notices. I was surprised to see them say they paid for our notice. The permit, our public notice. That's the first time I've heard that. So. We're just waiting on. On that to that time period to expire and then the treatment plant can discharge. So. So all that stuff will be in here. And the other thing I wanted to do is to investigate. So. I don't think you do it on yours because we don't have any of the towns. And I didn't, I should have enabled you to have the sample town.
Oh, the.
Yeah, the tile.
Yeah.
So so here. There's an option where we click on the lagoons or the treatment plant, which is right here being built. And it'll open up a tile view and the tile view. You to to do the tile view where you can drill into a building. And then in the building, it'll tile off and it'll say pumps, pump one, pump two. Chlorine dosage, it'll and then you can click into that and then it'll open up different parts in that. And to do that, you need to have exact Excel files. Spreadsheets made to get to Silver Smith. So we will do that in the C mom. So then it's just a very small additional annual subscription fee, which I'll find out. I mean, I think it's like less than a thousand dollars a year for the tile view, maybe even cheaper for us because of our population. But you don't, it's worthless unless you have those spreadsheets. So that's included in this price. Is to build all the spreadsheets for our wastewater treatment plant, our pump stations, the stuff that we would need to do tile view. Is also here.
Yeah, he went over the tile. It's like you can dig down into the menus.
Yeah, he went over the tile view. It's like you can dig down into the menus to the point where you're like individual gearboxes in the machine. And when to set up a routine, a scheduled maintenance routine for a given piece of equipment. We could pretty much itemize everything, including water meters. We can itemize all the water meters right in the Silver Smith with that title view.
Yeah, so I mean, this will give you all that stuff for the wastewater side. The C mom's all wastewater. But the tile view, uh, subscription would be activated or anything. So if somebody wanted to take on the role, you know, putting the meters in or whatever, you know, the D O R grant that we're applying for funding to do meters. So you kind of would get that two birds with one stone there. Cause you get a new meter and you could upload, upload the tile view for that. Really, that's probably more of an asset.
Yeah. So what, what percentage of the infrastructure would be entered in by your intern with this E D L?
All the wastewater stuff. So anything related to the pipes, um, anything from our plans that we've got that shows the invert? So like if you click on a sewer pipe. Yeah. So for example, each one of these is a manual. When we click on the maintenance view. Like what we want to know is, for example, how, uh, connecting pipes. Stroke or info right here. Invert elevation.
Some good lift stations and.
Here it is. So type one brimmin, these are all from, from the plans. So if you fill in wherever there's an inward elevation, for now you have a pipe going in, pipe going out, right? So P one, P two. And you would have it filled in. So you know how deep that manhole structure. So then if somebody comes in and wants to, um, tie into that, we'd know, oh yeah, it's deep enough. It's eight feet or whatever. So like that, the data that would be out in the collection system, we can get out of the plans real quick and bring it in here. And then everything else would be in the Excel format. But what this does also is if we've got a situation like a like this, I, I did this as a stock chat. So you at least have some information. So I created this icon called the, um, sewer line info. And maybe we'll leave it, you know, you can always shut it off if it annoys you. But if you highlight over it, it'll tell you it's an eight inch pipe, right? Here it is. Eight inch, so it'll tell you the diameter of the pipe. Um, when you click on the pipe itself. Okay. So here we say, well, pipe, pipe is made out of pipe diameter there. So you see, so Sierra will take that and say, okay, pipe diameter. I know it's eight inch. There you go. You know, and then anything else from the plans will get filled in here. So now it'll be there and you can shut that or not, you know? So, um, that sort of gives you like a quick access to, to, you know, all the data on the table. Um, and then here we'll have that Excel. So this is going to really help us. Or for example, if we've got this line here where it would apply to the sewer collection system, um, if we go to, um, create work order, right? And we say, you know, we bought the backer truck from Hill City so that we could vector that line. That was one of the main reasons, because this line is pretty flat. By the time it gets here, it's kind of finer than it should be. So the velocity slowed down. And so we need to do maintenance, annual maintenance on that line, on very own place. So here you can create a work order table, assign to, you know, what you need to do it, priority, global, I, which department, the dead schedule date. You know, if it was done, and that way this helps with our operations. Cause we can print all these work orders out. We figure out how many managers we have and double check our operations expenses in water.
Time saver.
Yeah.
So is the lift station information in there?
Uh, that's what, that's what I would have Sierra to do. Uh, right now, uh, lift stations probably. Seems like we only have the lines, manholes, stuff that was written available. So I'll have Sierra, she can add these. She doesn't need water, uh, so she can go here to edit view. Edit mode and she can add them herself. So she'll add in all the pump stations and then she'll create an Excel file. She'll fill in whatever she can in the maintenance view. If we want it, if that's going to have a tile view associated with it, she'll have a spreadsheet, which she'll can upload to the maintenance view temporarily until we do the file view module. We just put them a bunch of. It's not like an urgent thing, but we did, we got budgeted for next year or something.
Did you add all the water as well?
Yeah, a lot of water. See, mom's all wastewater.
Oh, okay.
But, um, water, water's the same idea, but maybe that's something we'll budget for next year. The sanitary report comes out, the state comes out and reviews our water system. I'd like to see that sanitary book for the next one, to see what the recommendation.
So the subscription will probably double it when we.
No, no, the tile view just maybe adds ten percent, fifteen percent if we opt for it. Yeah. And I wouldn't, I'd wait till we're ready and we've got the well, pump house and we got all the stuff, these things, and just do the spreadsheets to get us there. But yeah. Got to have the data first.
So you need a motion from us to approve C mom date essentially for twenty twenty-five?
Yep, that should come out of our sewer.
Budget.
Operation.
I'll make that, um, motion to authorize finish to develop a comprehensive update to the C mom for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, Aaron makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Donna seconds. Any further discussion? Uh, Dan?
So on that C mom, I know it was generated because of some federal needs we occurred as we were going through on some sewer issues. And then the reports were filed and usually sent out on an annual deal. They haven't not been done in the year yet.
I don't think we've updated anything for a couple years.
Well, we had last year a patch. If we don't annually, then we'll get caught.
I've been writing stuff for, I've been writing stuff for the lagoons. Been writing updates quarterly. Yeah, that's all.
And you can see, that's why I wondered if EA and R will, we were going through it now. They would always send out an email saying we need this, this, this information. And eventually, from what I understood, C mom will eventually then be relaxed. Once we finish the lagoon, once we finish the treatment set, we're going to be under the gun as heavily because of the ditch charge portions of it. And that's why we got funded and specialized for that portion of it. And then it will go back to the routine maintenance inspections where we wouldn't have to do the C mom report. After we got done with the building and after we got done with the treatments.
It, it takes on a new name at this point, becomes a facility plan. And you have to keep that up to date. They call it a C mom because we got in trouble, but right, it goes away and then that, all that data that we did becomes your updated facility plan. And they won't give you any money unless you got enough of your facility plan.
And with this, then for, I guess my main question is, once it's updated, then, then it's a simple situation for every year to be updated. Then in the reports of how everything is being managed.
Yep, yeah.
Cause that facility plan will be updated.
Yep.
And then your infrastructure will be all updated with this and put into the silver soul.
Correct. Yeah. I mean, that, the reason we're trying to dump it in there is so that it's useful, you know, it's, it's, uh, useful for operations versus if it's just a paper document, no one's going to fill through that paper document. And that way we can, but we can export this to paper or to spreadsheets to update our facility plan if we decide to apply for more money in the future.
That was my next question.
That's it. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. And then it's also for regulatory compliance because now we have a treatment plant with a discharge program. So different ballgame.
That, that was my third question. Where we're going to have to have the appliances, this is C mom. Like I said, number one is the one way. Facility plan comes into play at number two, whose EA and R are going to give us a new set of rules that we have to comply with the paperwork witnesses fully up up in operation.
Yep. Yeah. It's called a MPDS discharge program every four years. They come in and they scrutinize us for a year every four years. And so I can upload all our, uh, sampling and everything into this. And then just immediately come and access it and send it to them or whatever they need. Thank you. Got answers at all.
Yeah. So as part of the C mom update is that we'll be required to have all the Silver Smith data filled in for that.
So I'm using Silver Smith so that it's not just spreadsheet un, unusable. You know, we can, we'll put it, dump it in here and that way we're updating something at the same time as creating the update for the C mom.
Right. No, I like that. I mean, we need to get all our data fleshed out. We need to get everything entered into there so that we can begin to use it. Like Aaron mentioned, we can auto generate, uh, pretty inventive maintenance reports and we can, uh, you know, just have everything available at our fingertips and be able to know what's going on with our infrastructure. So that's, that's very good. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hey, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. On to succeed, FEMA generator grant.
Okay. So this kind of goes back to what Joanne's update, uh, Jones' update was. Bridget from Headwaters, um, is still working with state. She's still stuck with us. So that goodness, they all took off and stopped working with us. Uh, from FEMA because, uh, they're worried about part of their jobs. And, um, so I needed to, well, so Bridget reached out to us and asked to communicate with our environmental engineer, uh, Rob Bozel, who's in, um, Nebraska. And, um, he's got a lot of experience, uh, with SHPO and with environmental regulations. It's, it's hourly. It's not that bad either. Um, and I was able to figure out this morning or late, late morning, how long it would take him to do what Bridget's asking him to do that's requiring to apply for this grant. So what he's doing is there's six sites that need clearances. The six critical infrastructure sites, only one of them is undisturbed, but it's soon to be disturbed because it's the water tank that we're building on top of the hill there. So, uh, but Rob said that in this case, you always want to do all six and then let them excuse those other five. Otherwise they'll, they'll delay that. And, um, so he considered it two days plus there's a hundred fifty dollar document research fee from the state and the state reservation office. And then, uh, well, Sierra, uh, put the, update the exhibits for his use. Cause she puts them in a shape file. I guess everything in this application needs to be put in a specific format, shape files, which are, which are what are used to make the asset, the G I S software. Um, so, um, all that is thirty-five hundred dollars. So that's kind of the cost of doing business if you want to go for that, um, generator grant. Which I think we had said it was going to be two hundred thousand, we're asking people, oh, over two hundred thousand, right? Hundred thousand?
Should have you.
Sorry, I got three hundred thousand?
Three hundred? Okay. Yeah, cool. Basically one percent. To get this environmental, Bridget signs free. So we're trying to maximize what she's giving at no cost. And she needed, she asked for this help. So um, and I guess we only have ten days. So when it comes to that, um, Rob thinks he can get it all done and submitted by the deadline, but we don't have any control of how fast the agency responds. And so I asked Bridget, well, that, you know, if we missed that, how's that work? So don't quote me on the numbers, but I think it was five point eight million and it's like three, three million was now and then another two point eight was in the next one. So it's a split. So, so we don't hit this deadline. We still have the other half, I guess, or it was less than half. Um, in the second bundle of money and the state still like supports us in putting that application together, um, at no cost. So, so that, that's where we're at. Um, I would also say that I think this one had a match, right?
Yes, it does. Ten percent.
So then it's thirty-five hundred, we go towards a ten percent match. We're putting all these to get all these environmental clearances together. Hopefully we get six generators with propane tanks.
You need to check it. There may even be a spot in there for in kind, which Bridget could say.
In kind.
Which would have one time.
Yeah, that's true.
Can you, can you expound on that?
In kind means it's not cash per se. Um, for example, if the town has all the conduit put in or if the town, um, uh, like we're doing that project up there. So if we lay all the, in, in the project up on top of the hill, with two hills actually. Or even our wastewater treatment plant, we lay conduit for that or something like that, that all is in kind. It could be done pretty inexpensively because we're already working there.
So just a matter of keeping track of your hours and documenting our cases, everything. And then you, uh, it's just like paying the bill, so to speak.
Right. So, uh, that would go towards the ten percent match we would be responsible for?
Yes.
And so are you asking right now for the thirty-five hundred to keep this thing rolling?
Yeah, yeah. Um, the way I figured it is if Rob thinks he can get it in in time, at least it's submitted. Um, and then they will consider us in that round, then great. If not, the agencies will apply back and we'll be in the same round this year. I think it's the same year, right? It's just the second part of this year.
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. So it's not a total loss to them.
Right. And so we have basically two chances to get after this grant.
Yep.
Okay. And yeah, would the second chance require another fee as well?
That's it. It'd just be one.
Okay. Any questions or Karen?
I'll make his motion. Go ahead and authorize finish and move forward with the generator grant.
Okay, Aaron makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
The seconds. Okay, any further discussion or questions for Anthony? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, on to sixteen.
Sixty is the amount to basically, it's a, it's an amendment, a work authorization amendment to our building official budget. So we have an I'm tall budget of X amount of dollars. Um, and so it doesn't, when, when I, when I suggest the, to put this money towards the building official budget, it doesn't mean we'll spend it. It just means that it makes it more available for our building official. So we, we can use it to do inspections, think, uh, office support, things like that. So it was for reimbursement for the water review that was done. Um, I reviewed the Manning and Whitney Street water and then, um, Ferguson Construction reimbursed the town. So we'll put that money towards it so that we can finalize things there because there's inspections and things that'll need to be done. For the contractor, he's putting it in. So I figured it was an appropriate place to put it and it won't be, we won't use all of it. So we can use it for other inspections or office support for the building official. Especially since the development here would have, is proposing to have, you know, twenty-two lots in the first phase. And so there'll be some requests there to use it towards that.
Good. Aaron?
I'm not even sure. We're even, we've been expecting these developments as well and for finished as much as they're going to when we originally did the ten thousand. I'm thinking that's a sec. The page behind that is the existing, right?
Yeah. So the building officials, a little unique because the, each developer or builder, I should say, is going to have a square footage and they pay, I think, sixty-seven cents a square foot for inspections on top of it. for inspections on top of it. This is really the plans review when they got stuff coming in. It's our time over the whole year. Which isn't much, like a thousand dollars. If you add this to it, it's a thousand dollars a month for the office of work as a building official, so. So that's where that money goes. It's kind of like where it's not in an actual inspection. But it's everything leading up to it. Or questions like, can I use this material? Where's our, you know, where's the sewer and water at, things like that.
Yeah, I was just, I was kind of thinking, I don't think we realized how much we were going to be using those services.
Yeah, yeah.
At the time when we, this was January twenty-first, I don't think we were really thinking about how much building we were going to be doing, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so Hill City is using us for the same service right now, and they did the low number just to kind of see. Obviously, they can add to it too. So it's like I said, go as low as you think you possibly, like what you think you need. And so they're at, they're only, they haven't eaten up a lot of building official stuff, but like Neil for on-call planning, he's already at like twenty-five percent, so he's only been doing it for a couple of months now, so. So, yeah, that's just the nature of the on-calls is there, you don't use them up, you have like kind of a minimum. And you kind of just set it, and every six months you probably should review that and see what did we really need? Because it is all time materials. If there's no project, there's no cost. And just so you know, the way I did it was I put this one on building official, and then the one you just previously proved for the SHPO and stuff, for the FEMA, I put that on our on-call, like an office support on-call. Because it isn't really planner, it isn't really building official. It's sort of that third category of miscellaneous. It's technically like blood plane, really. Weird. It's not blood plane, but it's in the blood plane. We don't really have like an environmental engineer on staff, so it's going to be an on-call.
Good.
Did you happen to have like an update that I can file for them? The amount of portion of the project under? Just period, because we had to pack it on all the other ones.
You mean like the, the up on the left there is project? Where it goes?
Yeah, we didn't have a sixty, or I didn't anyway.
Oh, yeah. Mine's a sixty.
I just got that.
Oh, yeah, that's my fault. That's, Rob didn't give me everything till this morning.
So this, this on-call building official is really just like an abandonment to the sign of January, right?
Yep.
And so on here, it calls out for adjustment due to Whitney Street water extension. Complete D A and R approvals.
Yep.
So that's something that you expect to have coming up?
Yep.
Since we don't have any down Whitney Street right now.
That's right. That'll help us to step it into the town system.
Okay. All ready?
Yeah.
So I guess that was one of my questions was what this was for this adjustment for the deal with Whitney Street water extension. And complete the approvals, I guess I have not seen anything on our agenda for that. And so my question is, is the board has not approved anything for water sewer expansion to that yet. And this expansion, where are you anticipating it from from?
So it's, it's, it's still on our like master service agreement, this, this dollar amount. The money came from the water. The reason I indicate that it's Whitney and all that is because we got twenty-one hundred and seventy-six dollars from Ferguson Construction, they paid it. So I said, they paid what? They paid that amount of money for the town. Should do what? For the costs of the, of the water extension that was done already. So the water extension was already done, and Bush didn't submit it to D A and R for approvals. So that approval letter was received, and so that had to be reimbursed to the town. And so this helps us to then pay for inspecting the actual construction of it, but also can be, that one will take all twenty-one seventy-six. That'll take a fraction of that. So then we can use that money for other inspections that are coming up. Glad somebody coming in, the building inspector needs to answer questions, that helps with that.
So the twenty-one seventy-six, so that is for approval for the water sewer for his development then?
No, that's what we got the money from, from this bill.
Well, I, I guess I'm lost here because I haven't, I know there's a plot there and lots, but we have not, I have not seen, it didn't come through the board yet. The drainage study, current roads for any development very able to occur. And with one lot that's already been approved, it's not legally hooked up to water right now.
Right.
And so the town is going to pay for that extension in that name then? So the, not the developer?
No, no, so the developer paid for the, you know how it's, it's a temporary thing now? It needed to be designed permanently, right? So the, the developer paid for that to be done by the town.
So whether it's been, I guess, twenty-one hundred, I've seen anything come through the board that shows.
The water being?
Aaron has a question.
Well, I, I think, so just to make sure we're clear on what we're actually talking about. This is really just like an expansion of the budget for on-call. We're not necessarily authorizing him to do anything specific. We're just expanding the budget available to finish for on-call work. And that adjustment to review Whitney Street is just like justification. We see this project coming down the road, so we need to expand our budget to get ahead of it, so we keep our on-call budget available.
Um, and so let me just ask a question here real quick. So with the work you did for Ferguson Construction, which the town paid you for, and then Ferguson Construction reimbursed the town.
Correct.
And that was this twenty-one seventy-six. So now you're asking for the town to earmark that money that we received from Ferguson Construction, which was a reimbursement to us?
Correct.
Earmark it for?
Building official.
Building official, but it's only for the Whitney Street project?
No.
That we see it coming?
No, it can be for any.
Yeah, absolutely.
It just came from the Whitney Street project. So instead of, so what's, when I, when I, when you have funds coming, public funds coming in, you have earmarked them towards something. So if it came in from a project that was a developer project, then you need to have funds sufficient, let's say, with the building official. I mean, it's, it's kind of a, so it's either in the general fund or it's in some allocated fund, right? So by saying, hey, this money came from development, and we, we have to have, we have to spend time to make sure it's all done correctly, it's better to allocate that money to the person that's going to do that. So you're covered. Otherwise you'll just end up running out of money and coming to talk about this later. So knowing that, like, like Aaron said, knowing what's coming, that water main's not in yet, and adjustments to that sewer are done yet, but we need to make sure they're done right. So if we don't allocate to the building official accordingly from our, we already have, then we'll just be talking about this later when we run out.
Yeah. Data.
So I understand what you're saying, Aaron. I've never seen a plan, so we got paid twenty-one hundred.
We have water main and approval there.
But that's come through the board?
Um, town has it. Town has a water main plan. There's a spec book, water main plans and.
I understand that, and I understand subdivision ordinance, and I understand, but if we've been paid twenty-one hundred dollars already and reimbursed for a submission of an application, has the board ever seen an application? Have they ever seen a print of this extended water main or services coming from this water main going to the lots? Is what our subdivision ordinance requires? I, I don't, I, that's where I'm lost in this. So we say that we've got a submission of this money that's going to be put back in to this ten thousand dollar fund that you're asking for. And that doesn't include the only permit fees. So the building permit inspections is above and beyond.
Yes.
The ten thousand dollars that you're asking for. And this twenty-one hundred is being added back in here for plans that we've never seen for a development that a developer is submitting when, you know, subdivision ordinance, we are supposed to see the plans, the streets, the drainage before any development occurs. And various strongly states, anytime you have two lots or more that are going to be developed, it's considered a subdivision. And so we've seen none of this.
Well, so, okay, you're talking about.
Anthony, can you respond to that, and then Trudy has a question?
Sure. So, so the process you're describing is a, is the approval of subdivision or plat. These are already plotted lots.
Yeah.
The specific budget amount is for water systems expansion, so that's the town water system.
So we're expanding his development, so he can develop. And taxpayers are paying for this expansion of this line that's only going to serve him and not benefit any taxpayers.
Do you want to answer it? Because it's not true. So actually, it's the opposite. The developer comes in and pays for water main or for sewer main.
I understand, because I.
Gives it to the town, becomes the town's property. So that's not the town's, that's not the tax credit plan.
Sure we are.
All right. Uh, Trudy ends up?
We talked about this last fall, or maybe it was winter, but anyway, it was October or something. And so I would just like to say that maybe we should pause the discussion and go back to those notes because we had this whole discussion already about how it was kind of done negatively backwards. And I think Anthony said, we're just trying to get the work done, and then people said, well, we didn't follow the right paperwork. So we're just kind of going in a circle, maybe.
Okay, Aaron.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was going for. Can we table, I don't know what time, Anthony's timeframe is on this, but can we table this to the next meeting and poke around with it during the work session?
Yeah, I'd like to do that, just.
So I'll make that motion.
Make sure, make sure that we're kind of clear on everything that's going on, everybody is, you know, understands where we're at. So if Aaron makes the motion to move this item to a work session?
A whole meeting, whichever, whichever you.
Right, well, then the next meeting we have is on next Tuesday, right? Work session, no? So we don't have one scheduled yet.
Scheduled for May, yeah.
Maybe next regular meeting.
June fourth, regular meeting.
So there, there's just one thing I'll say, that's, so what will happen if it's tabled, is that comments from D A and R on the sewer side, that's all that's left, is comments on that. We won't, we won't work on those comments. We'll wait till the board approves this authorized budget so that we can work on those comments. So nothing can be built there. Pursue.
All right, well, here there's a motion on the floor. Aaron, may we have a second? Yeah, no second.
Linda, you there? Linda? Did we lose our Linda?
So.
I am here.
Okay, well, is there anybody like to make a motion in another fashion for this, or should we just move on, or?
I mean, the, the hope was that that gets corrected to satisfy the D A and R. So it's at that point where they've already reviewed it and made their comments. And those corrections are just there, so it's like, but what's left is, like, what's in the electrical cabin, right? We need to see that. What were materials testings requirements? We need to know that. What were the material types? Because it needs to meet our design manual. So I just had to answer those questions. That's what the building, the building official will do, is go and see what those requirements are and answer those requirements. And then that would be allowed to be done, and obviously the developer has to pay for all those upgrades to make it acceptable. And then we can accept it as part of the town's infrastructure. So that's all this was going to accomplish along with, and it wouldn't eat up all that budget. We'd still have some left over for other developments.
But the developer already did pay for it, right?
Yeah, he paid for the, so like, seeing as the, the, the thing was a little bit done backwards with the water main. But because it's water main, right, it can't be, that's our distribution system, so there's a little bit more criticality there.
Were you talking about the one-inch line that's going through there, or is that something else?
No, it was the, to, to replace that, because that can't be there. So that was kind of already done. We had to answer to D A and R for that, because it's in our water system number. So we answered that, we did everything that D A and R wanted, we satisfied them.
Can you do that last line that we're talking about?
Yeah, sure. Versus, what we're talking about is not in yet, but it would be water main, and we turn on the water. So basically right here. So the water main, right now, there's like a temporary one going down here. And so D A and R was wanting to see an approved water system update to that, that would have a hydrant and have water lines going that way. So we answered, we, we gave them what they needed, and they gave us an approval letter. Because that's an extension to our, our water system.
So the temporary or the permanent?
The one that we, that I, that I designed is permanent, hasn't been built yet. So then the first thing I said was, well, we have to, town has to be reimbursed for that time to extend our water, to show drawings and D A and R requirements for our water main. So like, like was said before, it was done kind of backwards.
We're putting a lot through there, is that what's happening?
Water main, yeah.
There's going to be a street there as well, is that what?
No, no street. Just do within that.
Just water then.
Yeah.
Development.
And, and so that's the development, and the developer has to pay for all that. And so the first part of paying for it was paying for the cost to get it through D A and R for the extension.
Okay.
So I did it, and then he reimbursed it, and that's that twenty-one seventy-six that's in the work authorization. So that goes back into the general fund, where we're getting up, right? And so what we're saying is, well, now the guy's going to build it, right? He's going to put that pipe in the ground. Well, building official needs to make sure it's all done according to the plans. So I said, why don't we put that towards the building official's budget? Because it's kind of a little bit extra work than the normal work of everyday applications. Because you've got somebody doing something, and we need to be able to make sure it's done right.
I have a question.
And then the sewer was already done, right? And so it had deficiencies. And so D A and R, um, when this water was done, we did a topographic survey in the same area, so we had all the data we needed to give to D A and R what's there. But they didn't know what was there. There's a sewer, there's a pump station there. And so by giving that data to D A and R, they made comments. So I just have to answer their comments, and then that can be adjusted incorrectly as well. So we can accept it as our city pump station.
Oh, so that's why the one-inch line and the line from the pump station going north on there, because they're not technically city yet?
They're private.
Okay.
Until they, they're accepted by D A and R in the private infrastructure.
I see, so if we throw this money back into that bucket, and we, and then you finish the process that you started with Chuck, right? Then is he going to reimburse what you will use to finish this process up? So that'd be another reimbursement coming?
Correct.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, anything that's done, the town. Yeah, anything that's done, the town, that's your reimbursement of the development.
Okay. Uh, Dan, do you have a quick comment?
Please, um, as what Anthony said, this is all completely backwards. And Mr. Hague would please be allowed the time to review this ordinance. I would ask the board to please table this because there shouldn't be no more development even allowed or permits allowed into this. And in a normal developer's world, the developer, not the town, would have put this line in and an extension of a sugarcoats, and I'm sorry, but sugarcoats. This where the developer doesn't have to pay for that line, but the town pays for that line because it's called an extension. And the developer normally, I'm sorry, but would normally pay for that line. The one inch line that's presently there was not supposed to be that. If you go back in the allocations, the original permit that was permitted, that he was supposed to hook into the main on Manning and bore the road and dig the line through or dig the road and put in a line for this individual of a one inch line down to the building permit that was there. That did not occur. So what happened, he tied into another existing line without a permit and ran over to that individual to satisfy him waters. So he didn't get in trouble with the gentleman he sold the lot to. So in essence, with our subdivision ordinance, what should have happened here? And he was, and if you go back to the permit that was approved for this, it was approved for the one inch that he was supposed to come back with the six inch. He was supposed to have the engineer engineer it so that he could come into it, then put the drainage plans together, the road plans together. Everything in that call was, uh, in that development so that it was following our ordinance. And I'm very disappointed that we're not following our ordinance. And if our attorney would be allowed the time to clarify this on how a development, as him being a developer knows, what steps and formats you have to take before before any of the applications can be applied for or residences, you can sell the lots, but you have no infrastructure there. The sewer was put in without a permit. And the lift station, none of that was approved. No applications are shown before this board. So I would ask that you rely on your professional with your attorney to do a ruling on this. I would say that we need to table it and wait till we have a ruling from our attorney. And then the board can educationally see it. So the taxpayers aren't paying for an extension of a main that does no benefit for any of us. It only benefits one person. That's the developer.
Uh, Aaron, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, well, it sounds like we're not so much necessarily talking about the root of this, which is to expand the budget for our building planner, town planner. And more into details about a specific development. I, I just feel like we're kind of off track here. How can we, how can we close this down and?
Right. Uh, John, and then Anthony, and then Trina.
Um, I was just going to mention, could we possibly roll over the twenty seven hundred into the inspector's fund and the pending the ten? Tell you. What you want to do?
What ten?
What the number is originally going to be a ten thousand, Trina?
That was already approved.
Yeah, that's our, that's our.
So you're only discussing the twenty seven hundred now?
Yeah.
Twenty one seventy six.
Has the ten thousand been used?
No.
Then why, why would you not reply to the comments?
That's what I was going to say. So I was about to say that what I could suggest we do is you could keep this for further discussion, but authorize me to reply to the comments so that that can be closed out using the budget that we currently still have. So we're not, we're not out of budget on building officials, but we'd be eating up part of that budget.
Okay.
So if you want to do that, I mean, we still got time. We can at least keep that.
Right.
But I don't like, like what has been discussed before about the water main. I don't want to go and do that. And then everybody says, why'd you do that? You know what I mean? I'd rather it be done right the first time. So if I'm authorized to do that, then I finish those comments and then we're reimbursed for that time as well. And that goes to the general fund or to the building officials' account or wherever you want. Still in the bank account of the town. It's just earmarked.
Yeah.
Are we still running on a cash basis? Not. So you have the ten thousand dollar budget, um, the two thousand one seventy six that coming in, I think you could put it towards like sewer, sewer, right, that you're talking about, not, or the water extension.
It's a little both because there's install, installation of water.
You're not making this easy, Anthony. Whether it's split half and half, you've got that professional fee.
Yeah.
Love and expense, but it would actually be like a reverse credit towards that account.
Yeah.
But it stayed like that. And you're on call, the board approves you to use that ten thousand there. That's what that's there for. But then you have a record of what's been reimbursed towards
Yeah.
that. It could be your general code enforcement as well, your general. But that's how you do, you track it. You don't necessarily have to just because it's been paid. Earmark it towards here because you already have a budget amount here.
Right.
And you're going to have a budget amount again next year.
Yeah.
It's in our accounting department that tracks what's been paid towards it. So in my opinion, the twenty one seventy six really doesn't. What's your thoughts on that? Does it even need to be?
No.
Or earmarked?
It's been reelected in, so.
Right, and it will have a record of it.
Yeah, and at any time, you still have to do a budget supplement if you start going over, you know.
Which we haven't.
We haven't yet, so. True, yeah.
But again, this twenty one seventy six is for services already, right? This is just taking.
Right, but because we're cash basis, we've ceded in.
Right.
We don't necessarily allocate it.
It doesn't go into this, but it doesn't go into the, I mean, it's just receded.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just making a clear, their clarifying statement is all. Aaron?
I'll give Anthony his motion to authorize him to move forward with the comments from the existing ten thousand dollar budget and to table discussion related to this two thousand one hundred and seventy six distribution.
Okay. Let me make some motion. We have a second.
One second.
Yeah, a second. Okay, um. Make sure it's locking down.
The discussion on it, though, down the road, I guess, I would like to see paperwork filed on it, whether it's already been done or not. It should be submitted as if it is a permit, just as always, with all the information included.
We have it. I mean, Julie then asked me to change the name on the project manual, and I said, no, I was working for the town. We have.
I mean, from the developer for the town, like, he came in and applied to put in that
Yeah.
line that already exists, the sewer line, right? He wasn't.
No, the water.
Aren't you talking about a sewer line that was never permitted that's there and no paperwork on it?
No.
So we should at least fill it out and have it on file.
Right.
He submitted a water, uh, he submitted an informational permit. As though he wasn't a developer because he was just doing one lot. So.
Well, I think this is all something that we need to cover in the upcoming work session.
Well, I do. It's my discussion because we're not earmarking and tabling this amount for you to inspect later, but I guess that's my comment.
Right.
I'd like to see the file paperwork kept up to date on whatever's been done and needs done.
Right, yeah, I think that's, uh, an important thing to make sure that we, we have everything straight on it.
Well, I think when this was brought up before, Kent said we were going the right track. We had an informational, it was right, so we were legal in what we were doing as far as getting what Todd, or not, I'm sure Todd's going, but that else went on here tonight. But it was there as long as we had filled out the informational permit that we were legal. You gonna get amnesia on me?
Uh, I would, I would have heard from the record on that. Yeah. No, I think.
Uh, well, that's the one that defined, we were trying to find temporary, what temporary meant.
You have filled out an informational permit.
It's almost like a year ago. And those were, those two permits were renewed this year in January. Those temporary ones from last year. Yeah, I think you guys.
When it becomes.
Yeah, I think.
Yes, we just have.
I think we need to, we're going to have to dig into this in work session and see what's going on and we'll get, can't stake on everything. I mean, if you can refresh your memory on, on what she's talking about, I guess, that to refer back to many. But, um, uh, Chuck and Anthony, and then we'll, we'll move on.
Okay. Well, I think I can clear up a lot of this. And development was originally laid out, then of course, these lots were previously platted in nineteen seventy two. So the plat was not changed. The infrastructure, um, the lot on the very corner there uh, had to have a lift station. It's not required to be engineered to put in an individual lift station. So consequently, when I put the lift station in, it was sized intentionally for future expansion, which would also include some services that came from Fifth Street down to that point. And that would discuss over and over in detail if that lift station would be capable of handling that extra load, which would eliminate the lift station on Fifth Street. And all that stuff was discussed in and out in detail. When the single one inch line was put in to accommodate a single lot, there was an informational permit filled out for last. And Kent ruled on that fact that there was meters on both ends that there was nobody stealing any water. What was accounted for metered and that consequently uh, the informational permit would cover that at that time because it was temporary. Now, what temporary means is one day, one week, one year, whatever. There's no real definition of what temporary is. The water main that comes from Manning Street down to uh, the lower street there would serve as future expansion for Whitney Street. At this point, there is no water uh, extension uh, to Whitney Street in any way, shape or form. It was discussed whether to put a T in there with a valve for future expansion from Fifth Street east that that could tie in. And, uh, never was really approved to add those accessories at the time rather than in a, down the road, digging it up and splicing it in and disruption of service and.
Chuck, hey Chuck, can, can we stop here? Um, I think these are all pertinent details that we'll need to go over during the work session, but right now let's, uh, stick to the motion, which is, um, being able to allow Anthony to comment on to back to the D A and R and get, and get this whole thing kind of wrapped up to a point. So Aaron, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just, I just maybe to just calm the storm that seems to be brewing a little bit. I want to get with Chuck, if everybody's cool with it, get with Chuck later this week, early next week, get every bit of information he has about this. Get with Dan, get his full perspective on this. And just so that when we come to this next work session to talk about this, everybody's perspectives is written down and we can really have a detailed look over it and we can make sure that everybody's understanding it and there's
That's wonderful.
peace in paradise once again.
Yes, sir. And I can agree with that. Um, Anthony, did you have a last comment?
No, just that, you know, as an engineer, and I have to kind of keep that in mind. If the D A and R is asking questions about health, safety and wellbeing, I have to answer it. And so with water system, it's a high priority. Um, sewer system is a lesser priority. So that's why that kind of, the cart kind of got before the horse because I needed to satisfy, they were asking me questions about it when I'm talking about other projects with them in our system. So I did not need them. For example, we have a two point seven million dollar loan with them in the water system. And I didn't need that to be jeopardized by, so I, I addressed it and we got it solved and approved so that they know that we're proactive in dealing with, uh, private water lines that could break and cause problems in our system.
Right.
So I'm trying to stay in compliance, which is, which is why that happened, right? Nothing's been put in the ground, but D A and R is satisfied. So that's kind of where we, how we got here.
Yes, okay. Um, for the commentary discussion. Okay, seeing done, uh, Jerry, can you reread the motion, please, so that we?
Yes, to authorize Anthony to make the comments. D and A, D A and R and to table the discussion on this into a session.
Okay. Very good. Um, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, sorry.
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, good.
Are you saying?
Done it. Oh, yeah, done as it's stated due to collective interest, is that right?
No.
Very good. All right. Well, thanks very much, Anthony. Um, that's it for engineer. Uh, you're, are you going to be discussing planning, is there any coming up? Okay, uh, let's take like a, uh, what, two, three minute and two minute, five minute?
Recession, yeah, two minutes, three minutes.
Three minute recess, please. And we will reconvene at seven twenty nine.
Are you real?
Yeah.
You look a lot better now. Got it?
I'm going to scream, Todd.
Yeah.
Uh, how are you?
Good.
So, and what time do we normally get for work sessions?
Whatever, I mean, you can.
Yeah, so a little bit of time, I mean, we don't have anything, so I got thirty.
No.
Better do what she likes.
That's right, if I got it.
Okay, you got one minute.
Cherry?
Yeah. Yeah.
Please tell me who all is in the audience.
Who all is in the audience? Chuck, Anthony, Trina, Deb and Dan. Laura from the paper, Leo. And then that guy with the same, same, with the building permit first. He purchased a lot, Frank Ferguson, on Whitney. He purchased a lot, Frank Ferguson, on Whitney.
Chuck, Trina, and Deb, Laura.
In charge. Yep.
Rejoice.
Yep.
And, um, as far as, and Anthony. Best that discussed.
Okay, let's reconvene the meeting that is now seven twenty-nine. And we are on, uh, item seven A, planning and zoning. Permit twenty twenty-five dash eleven, new residential structure. Parcel zero zero nine three twenty-four, Todd Stainbrook. And Anthony is going in for Neil.
Yeah, well Neil's done his staff report, he's reviewed it. Um, it's, it's a plot plan or site plan, so it's admitted by the, by the builder. Um, it was reviewed for. Um, yeah, it was reviewed for, uh, clients with setbacks. Um, the applicant will be subject to various inspections, inspections are four. Uh, I think it's point two seven, it's a residential, so point six seven cents for sixty-seven cents a square foot and that comes, that gives you four inspections. Um, so I guess, uh, Carrie, you're handling all that, right? That's a part of it?
What was that?
The fees, the.
No name for that, yes.
Okay, so we'll have to figure out a mechanism. I think I'll have Neil kind of have an Excel running. So when it is something like this, then we'll have the inspection fee like tally.
Sure.
On the column in Excel. And then we just know when it's done, check it off. We'll just film for you. Um, then the applicant, uh, will be receiving city services, that water sewer is kind of what we just talked about. And then the applicant to comply with the town, the ability code. Um, so overcuts when you're digging puddings, need an inspection down there, go over that inspection. Uh, when you pour your foundations, you get a foundation inspection. When you do your framing, before you put in the drywall, you get a framing inspection. And then all your, your licensed electrician, plumber, H B C guy, all that will call their own state inspections when we do the final. We'll see those final inspection tags, take pictures of them and give you your certificate, right? That's the process. You just call the office and you'll. Usually we're like, we like to have like forty hours.
So, uh, I guess Dan, did you have a?
Thank you, and nothing, I'm always forward with all of community, but once again, we have no subdivision followings here. There's no grand plan, there's no roads, there's no infrastructure. So how can they approve a building permit in a subdivision? Even though it's been plotted when it's been plotted, when we have no infrastructure to serve this individual and once again, that I'm going to put all the names in and call it an attention. I guess me that should be tabled, just like the others until the work session. So we have a plan of what actually is going to be done with developing down there for drainage and all our other circumstances with roads and access.
Okay, all right, thanks Dan.
My question has always been fed back from whenever said. This lot has been the original township, talking about subdivision ordinance for new subdivisions. This is not a new subdivision, it's, it's a lot within the original township, is it now? Am I misunderstanding my stat?
You're right, you're the checklist that you're.
That is the original township, follows the setbacks. I would agree, I mean, the staff regulations and true laws, so then setbacks.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry.
Meeting to the services.
All those contractors.
I mean, drainage is always a question regardless where you're at. I just want to mention to the board that that's why we need to either combine or add to or something for a subdivision ordinance versus original township, because mostly the original township is built on, but now there are a few empty lots and we're down and rebuilt, good enough. And yeah, I can see the point of of needing the utilities worked out that we're going to do at our next work session or next meeting. Um, does that need to hold up the permit?
I don't know, that's a, that's a good question. So as far as the work session goes, are you guys okay with doing it next Tuesday at five P M?
Labor Day weekend?
I don't know.
That's why we never voted on that one. It's a water memorial day.
What about on next Thursday? A bad day?
Wednesday?
Next, uh, next Wednesday, five P M?
Twenty-eighth, I think.
Twenty-eight.
I think I'm okay whenever, it doesn't matter.
Okay, thanks Linda.
Yeah, because the first ball's on Sunday.
You can't. You do it tomorrow. Do you want, on one item work session?
Tomorrow, yeah, I'll be doing it tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, tomorrow.
I need a meter somewhere.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna be done by five P M?
I have something going on at night, I can't.
My members should be present. I'm gonna.
Have to be posted, I mean, you couldn't start any earlier than where we're.
Okay, well, well, let's, uh, we guys think about it and we'll, uh, get back to that slightly a little bit. Well, he works.
I mean, but we could look at next, next Wednesday or Thursday.
You can do Wednesday.
Thursday, the twenty-ninth, that's still the week people.
Well, no, they may bring it out that long, you know. I, I don't do it all.
I mean, you still have to talk to Chuck again.
It's a week and two days.
Yeah, I want to make sure that I get clear view of both of their opinions on it, so we, you know.
Let's plot it.
So.
Was not changed.
So there's one.
Go out there and see, I would look at it, you know.
So in other communities, when you run, when they run into this situation, or we're at now.
Um, they were in, real quick, Anthony, can you just state the situation?
The situation that we're in now is that infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure to serve this gentleman's residence that he's asking for a permit is not in place yet. That's the situation we're in now. The water is not in place at all, the sewer is partially there. It needs adjustments to make it acceptable to the town standard. So what other municipalities do in this situation? They make the developer bond for it. Bond for it. So you bond for the infrastructure, because it's not in place. That gives a guarantee that it will be in place in time for this, this person's construction, because he's gonna start building and he expects that to be there. The bond guarantees that it will be there. That's what everybody else does, correct? And this is where Ken.
Yeah. What I'm not quite understanding is that. Number one, the person applying in a basket of a belt, or he's simply asking for a building permit to build a structure on those blocks, the latter. Okay, yeah, it's right here in packet on seventy-eight. Okay, if the lots are planted, um, why is there not infrastructure in already, since they were a lot of planted?
With original township, all of them.
Yeah.
Used to be, and, and, of course.
Okay. Yeah, you know, that's right. Yes, I. I'm gonna look at that a little bit because they can, so, um, build a couple hundred feet at least to sewer or city names to service their house. I understand both arguments, I think. But, uh, it's there's a certain expectation that a platted lot would have services. And I don't know whether, um, the applicant, I don't know who it is, but the applicant is, um, is he opposing getting services, putting that himself or?
So I think the developer, so the, the land is owned by Ferguson, the developer. And the water and sewer for that is not in. There's other lots in town, there's a tunnel. And so because it's not in, the lot is worth X amount of dollars, right? But it, it can't be built on without water and sewer infrastructure. There's, all the pathways for that infrastructure we put in are open because it's gone through the state. That's what, that's what we talked about previously. So the next step is for the developer to put that in place and builders probably on a timetable to build his house. And so he's asking the town to allow him to build his house without that infrastructure in place yet. And so the mechanism to guarantee that it will be in place is about.
Right, okay. That, that closes up this. So, um, yeah, the bonding mechanism is acceptable way to do it. Uh, looking at about, at least the bonding company, I use, uh, performance bond is about two and a half percent of the total estimated cost. Um, is what it costs for a bond. And, um, the other, I guess, the other thing is how long will this platted?
Eighteen seventy-two.
Seven, seventy-two?
Three, two, three.
Okay. Okay.
Original plant is file induction and it's all active here too.
Good.
There was never any intent for the town expense on any of this. I mean, it was being that it is an extension of the main. Uh, it, it triggered upsizing to six inch. To be able to service these lots. There's no expense to the town, it's all on the contract. Sewer and water. Sewer, what I said is, we have to discuss all this in the work session.
How many homes, uh?
There are six lots, right?
Okay, but there's only one structured service by water sewer?
Uh, there'd be four, because the other one, the other ones can hit the stuff on Manning, two on Manning. So the four on Whitney. Plus one, one that's existing, so five.
Okay. So, so, yeah, Whitney. Perpetual service, service life, but just service one, but there's potentially more than one there, okay? Okay, uh, Aaron?
Uh, versus comment, uh, maybe since this is gonna be actionable instead of work session, we should do it a special meeting. And second, I would make a motion to table permit twenty twenty-five dash one-one until it can be reviewed during either work session or special meeting alongside the Mount Fairbendish.
Appropriation.
Appropriation, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, Aaron has made a motion to, uh, move this, uh, permit application to the, uh, work session. Do you have a second on that? I think just because it's, you know, goes hand in hand with it.
I'll second that, but I think it has to be fairly soon.
Right.
I don't know. Sounded like there's some conflict, um, when it could be.
Yeah, so, uh, Aaron makes a motion into seconds. Uh, sir, what's your name?
Todd.
Okay, so you are, you are Mr. Stainbrook?
Yeah.
Okay, did you have a, a comment or a question?
Well, it just concerned me because when I went to look at these lots and I came up to the town and they said, yes, they are all plotted. This is the first time I, and when I'm standing in my lot, I can see the lift station right there. And they, they told me there's sewer right here, there's power there. And then the water was just the street up that was gonna be brought in, well, there was a trailer house sitting up there that was part of all them lots when they were plotted, he's already had water and power and everything there, so I'm going, how is he, you know, that? So I didn't have no concern over, you know, not being able to have utilities on the lots. So I don't know how, I, I guess my concern is, and I can understand if you can work this through, but I've already got some simple amount of money invested. I can't sit here, you know, if, if this can be done in a reasonable amount of time, I'm fine, but I understand all this. I've been doing this for forty-four years. But I just don't want this to be tabled after table, that table, because I'm eating a ton of cost here.
So I will say, so in any other municipality, you go through finding and zoning, which we consolidate that with our on-call binding engineers, so. So this would be like the, your finding and zoning window, they have to wait two weeks for it to go to the commission. And then they kind of approve that. And so they do that in the work session. So you're still going through the same amount of, I guess loopholes and, and I was in an application, actually, this is a lot more streamlined. I've never, truly, truly, in all my years, even doing big projects with motor, stuff like that, I might have to wait a month or so. Uh, just several houses and stuff like that, I've never had to wait for a week, we can have.
I like to live where you live.
When I did a house, I walked into customer, twenty minutes later, walked out with my permission, everything I need. So.
Yeah, I, I.
I know every town has its differences and I, and I understand. So, but I'm just saying, I don't want to have to, I already have, you know, with this already being plotted and all, you know, that some of the infrastructure are there, like the power and sewer was right there. You know, it's a lot that none of this other stuff is ready to go, especially after talking to Chuck, which I'm doing, that I've worked for the cities. So, but, and I, and I understand. But I just don't want to be tabled at table, I'd like to see this resolved as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and, and I know for my, in my opinion, that I would like to get this resolved as soon as possible. And really what this is, is kind of a vestige of a, a, a situation that developed over time that now we're coming to, uh, it's coming to a head basically with, with your, uh, wanting to build and everything like that. And so right now, we're gonna have to find a resolution to this and, uh, and in my view, it should be quickly as well, so, and, uh, I don't know if the, the board also agrees, I heard Linda agree as well on the, so, uh, so we need to, we need to get that, um, work session scheduled and convert it to a special meeting, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Can I help with that?
Uh, yeah, Linda.
How many people are available tomorrow at any time tomorrow, daytime or night ten?
I don't, I don't think we have enough time to.
Yeah, because we gotta have twenty-four hours.
Right, okay, so then on Thursday.
Thursday.
Just tell me if you're a no on the daytime.
Yeah, I'm a no on the daytime.
Okay.
Joe?
How about, who's the no?
Just you're explaining to look at all of this, are you giving him time to do that?
That's right, yeah, Aaron needs time to, to do his research, so really.
Next week.
He should have pushed it to next week. If, uh, it sounds like Donna's not gonna be available on Wednesday. Is that true?
Which homes do you talk about?
Next Wednesday.
And she happens to have a thing on one of the two issues or both issues?
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
Let's see, where are we at?
Most, most people are available on Thursday, I'm kind of realizing that some people owe me some shift swaps. So if I need to be made available on Thursday, I can find somebody to swap with.
So the twenty-ninth?
Whatever.
The twenty-second.
Whenever works for everybody else, I can.
You do it on twenty-second?
Oh, he needs to have time to put his information together. So I think, I think giving Aaron a, a week or so to do that is fair.
So next Thursday?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about right now, next Thursday.
And I'll get somebody to swap with me.
Okay.
That's it?
Whenever.
Yeah, so next.
Nine A M.
Next Thursday at six P M then, make it a special meeting.
Next Thursday, the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth.
At five o'clock.
I thought you had to work till five. Thought you said you did, no.
Well, let's just do it at six since this is a special meeting.
Yeah, six o'clock next Thursday, the twenty-ninth.
Yes, ma'am. And that'll give Aaron enough time to do his research, talk to Chuck, talk to Dan. And then we'll go over that situation as well as the permit. On the twenty-ninth in that special meeting. Does that sound like a good idea to everybody? Yeah?
And why you be getting Mr. Hay something to do? About reviewing your ordinance and what we're retiring to do on review developments?
Yeah.
Even though that's flat.
Alright. Well, I mean, yeah, I mean. Excuse me, I, I think it would be prudent to get his take on it since it's kind of a murky situation. There's a lot of different pieces that may not fit very neatly into the way our ordinance is read. And so, um, if Mr. Hay could give us a, uh, uh, could be a report or something like that to let us know kind of.
As far as like requiring a drainage plan that you would normally do during the plating.
Right.
First feature, but they've already been plated for many years.
Yeah, I think that would, I think that'd be helpful. Does everybody agree?
I think that works.
Okay. Well, I didn't hear any.
I have one more question before loading.
Yes.
Um. Is this something that we should go ahead and request the contractor to get bonded for now, so it's in place by next week? Otherwise, aren't you making a. Perceivably, you would be making a motion to sort of a building permit contingent upon the contractor.
Yeah.
Getting bonded before construction starts.
Yeah, you can do a memorandum, agreement and a letter of credit as well.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think that's.
For a hundred and fifteen percent.
Right, I think that's.
Got in place already?
I think that's a good idea that it would show the. The contractor would show the town that he's ready to move, move forward with this and, and get everything done. And then we can, like you're saying, have the groundwork, literally in this case, laid. And then everything can cascade based on the decisions.
Right.
Thursday.
And the one thing else I don't, that is that I've had builders, cause I've been trying to attract builders, building from us. And I've had builders comment, why are there so many empty lots? And I told them, because it's a historical phenomenon that has happened over time. And so, you know, you might wanna put an inventory together after this case of all the other empty lots that are out in town. That are plotted and don't have any water and sewer. You're gonna run into the same problem because people are coming to build a house and they think they got a nice thing going. And then they're running into some hurdles they didn't realize they had.
Yeah, we saw that at the last meeting, in fact, a different lot.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, the one on the corner. And that one's like all by itself. It's like, what do you do for that guy?
Okay, sir. Okay, so any further discussion? Uh, Dan, real quick?
Um, just a comment to Anthony's comment is, the other ones, that would mean, if we allow this, I just will start punching lines over here. Chills, allowing anything at all. And you start selling lots. Um, we never follow the precedents like this ever. In the, all the years I've been involved with board, we've always had our infrastructure and our drainage and everything in. And it's in the ordinance. So I, I ask all of you to please read them. And even though with a pre-existing plat, this plat over here has been in there for twenty years. Same thing, same example. So that's alarming precedents for me to go ahead and do the same thing. And start rolling ahead. So I just ask with our professionals, they know better. And the work session will allow this to be aired out in our, so that.
Alright, thanks, Stan. Yeah, I mean. Um, I guess in response to that, I mean, having Mr. Hay attend the meeting would be very helpful.
Anthony, you're here too.
Uh. Yeah, maybe, I mean, would you be able to come to that meeting, Anthony, on the, yeah, six PM? Alright, thank you. Okay, uh, Terry, could you please reread the motion before the vote?
Well, let's do table that permit until, I guess it'd be a special meeting.
Okay. So it's a motion to table the permit until the special meeting on.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Four ayes. All those oppose? Here, one, one in opposition. Motion carries. Okay, very good.
May I entertain another motion to request the contractor to provide paperwork to get bonded for the water and sewer. Provide it to the town.
Okay.
It's only in your own benefit, for your own benefit, so that makes it that much easier.
Okay, Shannon makes a motion. Do you have a second?
What was the motion?
To request the contractor to provide proof of bond. So that it'll prove that he's putting in the water and sewer lines on this permit, so that it's on file and ready to go before our special meeting next week. So it doesn't have to be contingent upon.
And you can also do a letter of credit for a hundred and fifteen percent of bank.
Would you like to add that to your motion as well?
You bet.
Okay, so.
One or the other?
Yeah.
Whatever you prefer, Anthony. I'm gonna.
They're all, they're all options, the other, I just follow what everybody else does.
You mentioned bond, so I'm.
Okay. Uh, do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay, any, any discussion on that? Right, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes, any more ayes? Nope. Three ayes, two nays, motion carries? Okay, very good.
I'm abstaining because I know nothing about bonds.
Okay.
You know.
So we have, uh.
One nay, one of snatcher.
Alright, very good. Moving along to planning and zoning, B, resolution. Zero five dash twenty twenty-five, resolution of annexation. Very, very nice.
This is the one that pulled out the application?
Nope.
It's not in here, so.
It came labor, so I just got from the. That's what I, to be the seventy.
Yeah.
That's the paper.
Yeah, I think these are for the Preston lot. Okay.
But is it necessary? Yes.
Of the, of the state law. Yeah, can you comment on the city for having a public hearing for annexation?
Yeah, it's, um. Annexes is probably. Among most of others, it's a very important function of US law. And what it does is it demonstrates or, or actually moves. Status of a piece of the property from one jurisdiction to another. So it can expose, um, the county needs to know, well, that's how it is. And the town is announcing it, I guess, contacting and, and, uh. Making it known to all affected parties around it and ensure that they are now about a, uh, part of the city. So this, this, it's pretty fundamental. It's a, a very, a hearing would be essential for it.
Okay, thank you. Um.
These are just for discussion. Well, this is just for discussion.
Right.
Approving any, you know, this.
So do we have to do a reading of these or this is just basically, we introduce it, we discuss it? It also provides a notice of the hearing that's coming up?
We need to put on this, this would be addressed at the next meeting to afford, you've got that safe on there. We just wanna get this out to you guys. Have each have.
June fourth, meeting in Mobile, being. I all. Public hearing.
Anthony.
So obviously, there's got a time, there's timetable for that development, right? So Neil wanted to get this going because sometimes that draft can get adjusted and. Or things could be raised, you know, questions can be raised. So he wanted this in front of you because the, the Prestons. Um, obviously in, kinda in return for this annexation, they'd like to see the master plan. Uh, develop for all their property. So it's not a big deal. They're gonna pay for it, but we will agree to review it because all this is not in the town limits yet. They're proposing to annex it. So, um, what I'm proposing is, is that all the requirements of a preliminary plat be submitted. By the Prestons, that includes the master plan for the whole, whole thing. Uh, road plan and profile, we want to find the plat in phase one. And then the preliminary plat with the checklist, it's through our subdivision ordinance. They gotta do all those steps. So this kind of impacts one of them, right? It can be a, cause things are still in Custer County. Where there's a second, second ingress egress that would be required after forty homes, which would impact the master plan's ability to actually come to. Come to fruition. So all those things you wanna secure so that you can approve that plat. And then. Yeah, all that stuff. Well, that'd be the final plat. You'd have all that. You'd have all the engineering. So preliminary plat, that those are the minimum requirements. You show utilities willingness to serve water, cause it's Southern Black Hills. And he needs to provide that willingness to serve letter. He needs to provide preliminary plat with checklist, road plan and profiles and the layout for master one.
So is, I mean, you say they have a request. From us. Um, in response to their annexation.
Yeah.
Is there a letter that documents what they'd like to see that, that is, puts in writing what you just said?
No, they're just, I'm gonna have them file an application for the preliminary plat. So that, those will be requirements. This is a development where it expands outside the town limits. So one of the requirements of our ordinance is, is if that's getting provided water and sewer to approve the master plan, we need an annexation. So you're kinda laying the groundwork for that master plan. That's what that document does.
Um, are Preston's seventy-five percent of those surrounding landowners? Or who is Neil saying that?
It's all voluntary. It's not a forced annexation requirement.
You still have to. No, right?
The one. He just sent those to me that he gave them.
Yeah, I mean, they still need to be noted.
Eleven.
So they can come and get the hearing.
Yeah, certified, I believe.
I guess, I mean, how it would be impacted is they'd be under there, maybe additional people would be under extraterritorial jurisdiction of the town. You're probably talking handful. If that.
Not them.
Yeah, that would be.
They're even have, that's on laws or are we lending them again?
Well, I guess there's so many. Bees, I, I don't know.
Eric, this, I think this still needs to be dug into a little deeper. There are mountains of voluntary annexations in the past in the town that never involve public hearings over the other. Now.
The only difference of a public hearing is the typing on your agenda and publishing it. It's like itty-bitty little twelve dollar ad.
Right, and there are many kinds of that voluntary annexations in history that I've looked through. Where there were, the resolution was published, but there was no public hearing ever held, no one was ever seen. So this is becoming a practice that never existed before.
I don't recall ever having a volun, having voluntary annexation much around here at all. We always wanted, but they haven't.
There are, there are a few in here. And there's one where a public hearing was held and the discussion apparently around that was, they didn't actually need it after all, after they had it.
I'd like to know which ones those are.
Can, can, can you please comment on that? Is for voluntary annexation or what we require to do full of public hearings?
This is the same argument we had a month ago, isn't it?
In the same, it may, my, my recommendation holds. That is, uh, because of the magnitude of what is going on in the system, I've got a bigger portion. Um, uh, that prominent owners in the hearing. Uh. Should occur. Yeah, do I believe it statute or it already yes, even if it is. It's felt on suspenders, we've done, I think. Uh, what should be reasonably required, people know that there's adjacent properties going into the city. Seem to be pretty straightforward.
So is that, is that the state statute that requires us to do that?
It violates your state statute.
Yeah. Okay. Very good.
What's confusing about it though, to Aaron's point, what's confusing about it is the provisions before that, talking about large municipalities and involuntary. Annexation, but the statute itself that talks about requires a notification, um, doesn't specify.
Okay, yeah.
So when we did the north water sewer line going up to Preston's and involved the shorted properties and all that, we helped, of course, public hearings for all of that. On it being a voluntary and, and as you say, it's a statute. In some of them conditions, that is what we've done, you can have, like we did with the tip. They wanted to be able to make sure their plat was prelim and final. Before they went through to the rest of the annotation, to make sure there was a commitment to the town. And to answer Shannon's question, then why wasn't the drainage and stuff done? If you allow a preliminary and final plat to be approved prior to this tip being established for the best county houses. What happens is then before any permits are issued, you require your drainage permit, your roads, your infrastructure, everything to happen. Before a permit or a lot can be sold. And that's also in our ordinance. So that is allowed to happen of that. And your trigger for any of it to be able to happen is of course your permits. So before any permits or properties are sold, they need to have all of this improvements and infrastructure done by the developer. Before it can go over. So that's why with the annexation, then that's where we were at with that. And in both circumstances.
Okay, Aaron.
I just wanna steer us back on that. Anthony, do you need us to make an action?
No, I mean, Neil put this on the agenda for your attention. I think it's an FYI. Um, I wanted you to know that it's tied to the Prestons moving forward with their preliminary plat for their phase one. And their master plan, which spans outside, cause that's why I zoomed out. If you zoom out, Aaron, it would be everything that they got. So what we're talking about here, that's why I did that. I noticed that we don't have anything to have parcels in there, anything to count in that. So, um, so you have this parcel, which is one of the annexation parcels. This is already in the town limits. That was annexed before. This is proposed to be annexed, this one. And then this is already in the town limits where you can see that U shape. But then they wanna annex this part. It's adjacent to, basically everything that's contiguous, the ones already in the town, they wanna annex it. Cause they want the master plan approved for that rest of their land. And that's because there's only, there's limited access to the highway. They need that neutral for the tip. Um, this is the second a- access that's out here, this existing driveway, we wanna secure that. So to secure those things and make sure the master plan can be approved, that has to be within our jurisdiction and, uh, plating rules. Otherwise, they'd be outside our plating rules.
Yeah, because you gotta go through all kinds of.
I apologize. I just wanted to make sure that. The wrong owners are notified for such a meeting.
So that's it. He'll just, he's just letting us know that he's gonna be doing, that he's gonna be asking us for the first reading on June fourth.
Yep, he said in the dates. Yeah, that's what he had to do.
And in that meeting will also serve as the public hearing. Yes, okay, awesome. Anyone have any further comments on the annexation?
I just wanna say, I still see this being very clear regarding to the, the notice, um, nine dash four dash four point three. And then we're having a hearing, um, here to be very clear, nine dash four dash four point four. So I just wanna say that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, it will be. Okay, moving along to, uh, planning and zoning in seven C. Review of golden permit twenty twenty-five, that's well, the territorial area, ten Hurlbert, Barney H X four of McDermin subdivision, full shed FYI. So we don't have anything for that, do we, Terry?
From the county.
Yeah, he changed it. We, we approved the carport, thirty-two by thirty-two carport. Now he wants to do a thirty by thirty full shed, same place. Still means now that twenty-foot easement and, um, yeah, so, and this, and the county has to do the permit. They just have to know we're okay with it. No, no, you know, and I've been Terry, Custer with the planning, they, they want to address that sixty territorial agreement. We have it expires next year. Because some of it's really not clear, because like that, we review it, they're focused by our standards, but yet they do the building permit. Doesn't make a lot of sense. Yeah, to me, if we're, if they're doing our standard, we should be doing the permit, but that's not how it reads right now.
I guess I'd ask them to make sure they put in the flood fence.
They would, yeah. Yeah. They'll, they'll have to do a flood firm, flood firm up.
Well, since we don't have the permit, we're gonna have to.
Well, I have.
You're pending, remove it. Sure.
That it's, it's enclosed totally?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Totally different from what he originally wanted, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can end this until the next meeting, until the special meet, can we add that or no?
Oh.
I want to do it.
I, I think we should probably analyze the number of things we added this.
For the June fourth.
Yeah, I think it'd be better, would be better off if you do it. All right, thank you, Terry. And thank you very much, Anthony.
Yeah.
You have a quick comment, Dan?
Yes, I knew, um, I know Shannon brought up in the planning process on this that I thought we were gonna make him annex that probably before anything to be built. But we've forgotten. That was every part of the condition of the planning.
Wasn't part of the motion. I'll back and listen, but I don't, I don't call it, that was part of the motion.
I thought that came up in the discussion when it was a carport and it was sold to the new Tim.
I'll go back and listen to that and then report.
And it wasn't a residence. No, but now we have a lot with an accessory building and a house, which is against the ordinance as well. But again, it's from the county, not the town, the button, the town. And should require annexation.
Garden, that's a garden, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so like, if there's a house, then that's what we said.
They'd have that.
If they grab any utilities from us.
Yeah. Only if it's a house.
He doesn't have, and he won't have utilities. He will never, anybody will never.
Completely forgot about the, remember we have an ordinance too about not allowing an accessory building on an empty lot.
Yeah.
Has to have that, that.
Is it counted as an extinct, it's not counted as?
Let's not platter together.
Yeah.
Platter them together.
Jerome, did you have a comment on that?
I did. The county is asking for your opinion or how you feel about this. They're not saying that they're gonna follow what you say. Therefore, you have to reply and say that it's against our ordinance to have an accessory building because there's a home built.
Okay.
And it doesn't mean it's gonna change their mind. You definitely want it on record that you're following your own ordinance.
Great. Okay. Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, because this brought us into a building requirement, even on the pole, the pole building, whereas the carport was under the homeowners' warranty, wasn't it? It's twenty by fifteen or twenty by ten or something? So this changes everything that you needed to plan.
And he completely changing what was on the app here, it was supposed to be a carport. Manufacturer carport, and then it went.
Then he was gonna do a variance.
Whole structure, now he's saying he wants to impose it.
Well, he wants to do a.
It's hard to comment on something we don't.
But these are all valid points that we need to, Terry, let me do, do the discussion on this.
Do we know when the county's gonna act on it?
Well, they can't do anything till we, they get a comment from us.
No, but they'll give us all our comment, don't they?
I'll see when their next meeting is. They have a meeting.
If it must go on a special meeting, we'll have to.
Because I think they have a meeting. They probably had a planning, yes, this week, so county, this is tomorrow, so it's probably two weeks. Before they have another one.
Very good.
Okay. All right, well, thanks again, Anthony, um, for both engineering and the planning and zoning.
Sounds good.
Okay, moving on to claims.
Have a good night, thanks.
Can I make a quick comment before I move on? Can we check that motion?
I'm gonna go back, listen and check the motion.
Yeah, because I would like, if it does not, I want it amended now before a building permit ever comes up and says, oh, she changed her mind or they changed the law because somebody applied. I don't want it. I mean, our intent wasn't like Anthony heard the same intent. You know, that was my intent with the motion was that.
Yeah, I just.
When a building permit is called, then they will be required to annex it.
I'll have to go back and listen to that. It's taking a little time, I can't do it right now. But I'll do it tomorrow.
Want that noted and in the record and on tape. That was the intent. And yeah, please let me know if I need to amend it. If you find something different down the road. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, my back's really aching.
Okay, moving on to claims.
I make a motion, we approve the payroll and claims as stated.
Yes, please, and I'll second that.
Okay, you're gonna mix the lotion, Shannon seconds. Any discussion? Give it a second, let it check it out. Permit fees on there for water rights and drinking, drinking permit, and that's nice. Some engineering fees. Yeah, pay out five for Baroque Advantage, that's a good one. They're getting real close to finishing, uh, B North and B South.
Yeah.
Here you bundle.
Okay, any, don't see any discussion on here. All those in favor of accepting claims?
Aye.
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 I don't know, stay in front of this.
Okay. Four eyes, one abstention, motion carries. Okay, law enforcement, new town marshal position, ninety-eight. Somebody on the, uh, law enforcement committee like to introduce this one or?
My fearless leader.
Well, during the time yesterday, we talked about it and we will go into executive session and we have discussed. Yeah, and if the board approves, approves it, then we will, uh, offer to talk. He's coming out of Florida, North Dakota, very angry. And, um,
Old Dominion, Florida.
Okay.
Executive session.
Ending, following the, the executive session, uh, here.
And, uh, one thing we've talked about is, um, when he gets here to do a very public meet and greet for him. So he has an opportunity to meet the citizens when he's getting used to the area and so that they can get used to him. He's not going to go to the class until August. So if he manages to get here in a few weeks, we'll have a couple of months where he's not really law enforcement. And he'll be able to go out and just kind of get to know everybody and get everybody comfortable with the new face that's gonna be in town. But, um, he is a rural kind of guy. Worked in Alaska, like covered a thousand miles of wilderness.
Well, he doesn't ever go.
Let's move this along.
Yeah. With that aside, yeah, no, he's, uh, he's, he's super excited to be here. And he's got experience in way more than just law enforcement. And again, he is a rural kind of guy, he's gonna fit in. Whole family's super excited to be here too.
Very good. Already, we don't see anything on there for legal, but it is blank. I guess that means it could be anything.
So. And so it's a surprise.
Did you have any, uh, anything that you'd like to discuss tonight?
Uh, uh, no, not specifically, I was, um, just looking further in the Saks and the, uh, for our funding case law. I think stronger support than those provisions we were talking about.
That's all. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for that clarification. Okay, well, we're on Public Works and it looks like our public works map. Public book, so.
I'll turn the streets.
Um, well, Aaron, pick up some of the streets here.
And I'm gonna keep it short and simple for tonight, because this is definitely something we're gonna want to work session. Um, as far as the overall streets plan, uh, we're still waiting on information from Dan. He's got a few things he's gonna take care of. But, um, I did get, so I'm gonna just go ahead and then read into this. I did get the votes we asked for from Simon. Oh, spoiler or no? All right, so this is for North Second and Ferguson specifically, chip sealing. Just over fifty thousand. This is.
What was the difference between the twenty-two and the fifty-two? What did we take off?
We were, we took off Whitney. And this, we took off Whitney and add
Ferguson and.
Fifth Street. Um, so we're looking at, yeah, a lot of, a lot of money. Um, but last Thursday or last week after that last meeting, I called and got another contact and had Mark from Dakota Asphalt come out and drive around with me on Thursday. And he kind of, kind of gave me his breakdown and he very strongly reiterated that chip sealing those streets with the condition they're in would not be effective. Um, chip seal is like clear coat on a nice layer of paint where we have rust. Uh, we shouldn't be chip sealing really what we've got right now. We need to do the repairs first, so. I said, all right, what do you think we need to do on North Second and Fifth Street? So he gave me, he gave me this quote. So the top is to cut out four foot wide and two hundred and fifty-five feet long of North Second, that whole busted road edge, to cut it all out, completely rebuild it with recycled asphalt for sixty-seven fifty. That would get North Second up to a full street again. And the bottom is cut thirteen feet wide, three hundred and seven five feet long of Fifth Street to cut out everything that's bad on Fifth Street. Put an entirely new road bed under it and repaved it with recycled asphalt for twenty-five thousand. And.
How long have you been in business?
So he.
That's Eric Lowry. Expensive, but way lower.
Yeah, he, uh, he's working fine. But, um, yeah, no, I actually got word of them, that other municipalities are starting to use them. They're really got a good reputation and a reputation for being very diplomatic. Um, I mean, look at the mobilization. But the one really cool thing he was very forward about is we can pick and choose whatever we want to do ourselves off this list. So we can go in there and dig up this street and get it all cleaned out. So all it's ready for is a layer of asphalt. And then we have mobilization, finals place, final shaping and recycled asphalt. We're down to repaving all of Fifth Street for thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, if we do all the digging and excavation and get the old road bed out and put a new one in. So. Well, that's if we do it ourselves. So this is, if we just let them do everything. It's twenty-four. So now if we go in and we do the removal ourselves, volunteer style, we can knock that line item off. If we go in and place the base course, we can knock that line out of it.
And that's still gonna have some cost associated.
Right. But.
They've closed the ten grand though.
Yeah.
Between those two items.
Have you found out what other municipalities?
Zoom it out.
Zoom in?
It's the layer that's.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a better for over here.
All right, Tom, have you found out which municipalities have used this guy? Call him to get some references.
Yeah, that's, that's how I found out about him. I was like, who's everybody else using? Yeah. Up in Hill City, they're using Coda now. Yeah, um, they're in Blackhawk, um.
Like, did, did, did they tell you which streets they were supposed to go look at?
Not specifically, I could get that, I could go.
Yeah, if you can, let's, uh, let's go look at them and just see what they look like and give them a stall.
But, uh, yeah, it's newer company, but it's a collection of people who've been doing it for a long time. So, um.
Well, that's really nice.
Yeah, that's, that's essentially two fully repaired roads.
So we look at that again when we get the rest of the.
Yeah, um, but yeah, as far as the Simon, the way chip seal is intended is you put down fresh pavement and you use chip seal to protect it. We don't have, we don't have fresh pavement. It's, he's a very pointedly, I would never chip seal this road. You'd be wasting your money. Um, if they do the repairs, then they'll, they'll use a sealer instead of an actual chip and seal. They'll just do a sealer and he said that depending by conspiracy. I thought that was gonna be in the quote, but I'll get that too, to lay the recycled asphalt and then seal it.
That's for Fifth Street.
For Fifth Street is, you know, Fifth Street is here. And North Second is here. And I also have Silver Smith up.
Okay.
So, you know, that section that's wow, I hate. Um, that downhill section that's really thrash. All of this. There we go. So from Rupp Street all the way to the bridge to cut out four foot wide, all that damaged road edge, to cut it all out and replace it. Oh, okay. That's that. That's that there?
Wow.
Yeah, sixty-seven fifty to cut all that out and replace it with four inches of recycled asphalt, ready to be re, re, uh.
All the way to the, uh, the, the top of where it drops off.
Yeah, Rupp Street all the way down to where it flattens out. And then.
We're gonna rebuild the shoulder as part of that too, right? That's like.
Uh, as far as like drainage, that's one thing that we would need to get ahead of is it would be on us to shape that shoulder that and get that to where it can actually have a sustainable road surface. Um, but then, uh, he looked at Fifth Street and when me and Dan had talked about Fifth Street, we were looking at eight feet. When he got down there, so the eight feet is really bad, the roller coaster. But you can see it's bleeding up further. And he's like, if you just do an eight foot strip and then you're gonna have wheels on one side of that separation and the other, then you're just gonna get boiling in the middle of the road where you didn't do it. So he's like, we gotta go in full thirteen foot wide and. So yeah, pretty much cut the road in half, clear everything else out on this half. So yeah, pretty much cut the road in half, clear everything else out on this half of it. Refill it with road base and repaint it with recycled.
Yeah.
And that recycle is essentially the Millings repack it. They actually would lay it down with a paper. They would put the proper amount of water in it and everything so that when they go back, when they go over it, then it will reconstitute. As fresh pavement. Also.
That's pretty interesting.
But then I talked to you, one more thing is then I talked to Anthony because I've been asking and talking about it. You can send me this. Oh, no, wrong one. Let me go back to T D F. Uh, eighty twenty grants. Um, I wanna see about getting him to, he said he would put together the numbers to see about us getting a grant to pave. Fifth Street or repair Fifth Street, that section of Villa Street and. Fourth Street. So there would be a solid pavement loop from the highway all the way down, up Fifth, around the school, back up into the highway. And this specifically is what that's for. And it's another typical eighty twenty. Yep. So.
Good. Interesting.
That's, that's why I say, I told Cal, this is like a lot and really more work session stuff we're probably gonna have to dig into.
Yeah.
Especially since, again, there's a lot that Dan still has that he wants to look at and some of the stuff that we can do ourselves before Simon can.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah. Uh, that's okay, Tom Streets.
We could make that work out. That'd be pretty nice. Uh, Dan, did you have any comments on that?
Yeah, which that's great on the passion and stuff, but I do disagree about uh, just Pat chip sealing over new pavement only. Um, I mean, twenty years we've been out here doing the uh, with hand Second Street. And that's what saved it to this point is filling all the alligator with what they do with their oil and then coming over with chips. And setting that up. So, you know, if they did North Second, awesome on the repair. But we still need to chip seal it. And if I don't chip seal it, then you're not putting a seal over that. And everything we did going around that corner is gonna go away. Then you just well figure out pavement and everything. And I appreciate his opinion, but it's just what we've done for our track record of what we have experienced. And as far as Fifth Street goes, I mean, that's what I dug out with eight foot coming up that. And we never had a boil one. And then we put gravel and millions back in there. And that center has held beautifully as well as the edge. And then we chip sealed over the whole thing, the seal. Which is what sent it amended at that point. Otherwise, you don't have a cap on it, just like the gravel roads. Why it's so important to backline because it puts a cap on it and seals them off.
Alright, well, I mean, we're gonna have to go over all this in work session and.
Yeah, we can give that to Tom about everything, so. Basically, I have a folder that I'll give everyone to get a work session then and of everything we have, the quotes on everything.
Okay, awesome.
Right, Tom, Chuck's back so he can, unless you want me to keep going with everything else I got.
Yeah, well, you might as well finish up and get over to Chuck.
Okay, that covers everything for the streets, but the only thing I wanna reach back on is um. The couple, when we talked about the half sealer, um, or sorry, the crack sealer, there were some questions and I got ahold of the manufacturer. Um, so as far as extra nozzles, they've never had anybody order a nozzle unless it broke. They said it's so easy to clean. It's really not something that you wanna bother considering. Um, they do not have a package with material with the elite unit. Um, he said the absolute best bet is to do that half pallet. He said the half pallet does seven thousand two hundred feet of crack. Um, get a quote on a crack seal team. Uh, so he told me the, like, pretty much across the country, bare minimum, you're looking at a dollar per foot to seal crack. Um, and I've looked around and around here, it's like a dollar twenty-five to a dollar fifty per foot. Um, the, this machine plus the half a pallet would do seven thousand two hundred feet. So it would do everything we have in town now, plus everything that could develop over the next three to four years. Um, the weight of the machine, it's a hundred and thirty-six pounds plus twenty pound propane bottle. Probably thirty pounds all in with the metal. Each block is thirty pounds, but you can put up to three in the machine at once. So it's not like. It automatically jumps up to the two hundred and ninety whatever max. And he said, you can put one at a time. What he said with you guys, I would recommend two at a time. So it's not that heavy. Um, the heat, the question about operator heat, uh, Dan had mentioned that um. He talked to somebody in the industry about these units can be hot, be around. This is the only one in the industry where it's an actual propane burner, not, so typically, he said, the other manufacturers, they heat up the rubber with a torch. And they actually have an enclosed propane burner underneath the unit. So he said the only time you'll feel any heat coming off of it is when you open it to refill it. Uh, other than that, the, we can buy individual boxes, hundred and twenty-three bucks a box. That does two hundred feet. Um.
And that's one block in a box?
Yeah, one block in a box. Um, ten year shelf life on the rubber. Um, he recommends uh, running compressed air, air, and actually another tool, uh, basically a walk behind wire brush. It's like a ten inch diameter to just scrape out the inside of the crack before you then blow it out with compressed air, then lay it down. But yeah, I think that's. About all the questions. Um, he said uh, a wand crack sealer, like an actual, like, you know, a system with a wand. New thirty grand, used, you're not touching it for under ten. Walk behind you or the, the crock mounted units is what those are. Um.
It's hard to keep down this one.
This was, he did send me a code quote, but it's twenty-two for this plus the thirteen for the material, thirteen something. Thirty-five hundred.
Were you saying thirty-seven?
Yeah, so it's um.
Oh, uh, and I talked to him about the material. He's like, um, the other, the other material isn't actually for this machine. This machine takes specifically this material. The other one is for their wand units. So this is what we want, he said, um.
But we don't have to buy the whole half pallet of it right now.
No, we could buy box by box, but I figured we've probably got. Three thousand feet's worth of cracks. Ground down. There's at least, at least five hundred on Whitney alone, I think. Correct? That could be sealed. And they said this will do all the way up to an inch and a half is what they recommend sealing up to.
Wow. So for the brush machine?
That's about fourteen hundred. That's in here too, in on their site.
So it's at least a two man, it's a three man operation. You got the brush machine, the compressed air, and then it'll seal.
Well, I mean, if you wanted to do it with all simultaneous.
Yeah.
Is that it? Yeah.
So we cut it.
Yeah, it's just a, it's a wire brush.
Oh, they put a wire brush on it.
A mounted unit that you go in and scrape out the cracks. He said this, a compressor in the machine in here.
And how much is this?
Ready to go. That's twelve forty-four. This is something. Do you think it'll modify the hand? Is it really thinking for the whole thing? Uh, if we go with this as well. Uh, you know, they are, at the same time, there's, there's, they are at the same time salesman, you know, so they want us to buy. All the equipment that they would recommend to do it sequentially. I think that just a good blast with compressed air. And crack sealer in most cases would be what we need. And it would be the unit with the torch to burn out vegetation. Because that's a big part of this is also to strip out vegetation, not just clean it. And we'll be doing that with the torch. So, yeah, it's no rush. We can. Table this or whatever, but I just wanted to make sure I answered all the questions that you guys have last week, unless there's any others you can think of or uh.
I appreciate you getting all that information.
Yeah.
I'm assuming they don't have any specific pricing for municipalities, but they would accept the tax exemption certificate.
Yeah, yeah. And everything's free shipping. Or no, the, we get the pallet materials free shipping. I think if we do box by box, we'd be paying for the shipping. But all the rest of the equipment is free shipping.
Great.
I'm trying to just, trying to think if there were any other. Questions. Not any of you remembered questions, but I didn't already answer it.
No, I might have to come back to it anyway.
Yeah.
Get more information, so I think.
Do, we can do this, add this to the work session with the streets or whatever.
Yep.
That's all.
Okay. Guess that brings us to Mr. Ferguson.
Well, thank you for your help with the streets.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the street lights, um, now it's come. I don't see anything to foul at this point. But someone else who visually seen it, something to tell. Um, water, um, everything seems to be, one of the things we're dealing with uh. At this point is daily. If what's going to the lagoon, um. Further down, uh, we'll be here and we'll be talking about uh, water sample. So. We, you know, everything is checked. On our side, we don't have any huge. Uh, issues in our water loss report. Um, we also have some questions about that.
We get a water loss report?
Look, usually don't happen when you go outside strictly.
No. Oh, moving on to sewer. Um, well, grains have developed an awful lot of mud. Over to the.
Really?
Running, we're running it about six inches of mud over there. And uh. Dry out before the monsoons. It's really happened things big time.
Right.
We had uh. Water from sea got into New C. And we're in process of de-watering that right now. And uh, it's held up uh, the detonate situation. Even with the rainfall, they couldn't put it down. So I'm gonna have to farm that again.
Talking about a diesel.
Yes, uh, everything that's in the. A part that will go into. That large open cup they have on south side there, D M R is a little bit. You know, exposing that stuff on site. And um, that's a good thing. That maybe has to be followed on that little bit. Anyway, that's that. The treatment plant is uh. Moving along, it's, it's, we have ram it on. Um, to redo the main. Bacteria and stuff in the wheel. The gearbox has been changed out and uh, which will help the production by quite a bit. And uh. Still looking at getting the siding on the building and that stuff. They were delayed on pouring the floor. Because of the mud, we can give it some address here. And I haven't talked to uh, John in the last couple of days to see what he's got in there. So. That's for that.
Uh, Chuck, are we gonna have the pumps on the sea to the detention basin?
Uh, actually, we have the retention in A and C. To probably expand the storm. We can surcharge both of them. And so that pipe that removed the possible crisis problem child. Between C and a new start. Yeah, that was removed today. And uh.
Today?
Yeah, they did that this morning down there after all that crossover fight on that we had uh, love you. So. With de-watering the new pond on the, there is east, southeast side. That's being pushed over into the detention pond. And they physically look in there and dug down enough to get some holes so we can literally drain it. Please, providing we don't get any more rain. I mean, rain's wonderful, but. I don't do the damn thing for that over there.
What did they do to the corrupt over pipe? What did they do with that cross?
They removed the existing valve and still was in there.
Okay, but the, the one that Dave sold is still there though, right? The one that has the valve on it and sticking out?
I think it is, yeah. I could get it in that post up just trying to. Look, I see I had a conversational draw through half a pallet in the bone. Here we're going. Try to get that. Uh, hole in there so we try to bring that whole mass.
Still look there.
Yes. It's muddy. I think that's kind of colors out. Um, Dave. It discovered some more dirt. We were short dirt, never had too much, one hour short. Uh, but I think they're gonna be able to. With. Old thing. That died between or be used to be, I think it's gonna be some more dirt already there. It's got to come off too. So I think most of the fill is done around. Treatment plant itself. Those dikes have all gotta be brought up about two feet. Have to do that, yeah. Um. Open work orders. We have a half year, some of them. I think there's three or four that have not been addressed yet. Those are being closed out, um, slowly. He is the drinking water sample. And all confusion. And uh, the last twenty-five years or whatever. April sample was not selected. First, the last off, they had lost it. And then when they turned, they had not. And it's a computer to. A reminder of. Sample was taken. And like I said, somewhere in the hustle, in the hustle of everything that's going on, so. Office personnel changes and one take another and they. Simply got overlooked. Not a huge thing. We've not had any problems in that area for twenty years, uh, prior samples. Most recent samples were signed as we have been for many years. However. Um, we do have to. Do a report of some sort notifying publicly that that sample was missed. And uh, Harry has been in contact with that and following up with the procedures to be done. I don't recall it. Happening some of the about eight nine years ago. We had a little mix up on something. But it's very unusual. But we do all the procedures of the notification.
Um, real quick, Chuck, Terry, he mentioned that you were.
For the building notice on the back of the water bills that go out next week, that's, we have to notify all the. Users and residents and that's probably easiest way. I have posted it on the website. It's posted outside in the. Um, bulletin board, so, and I will follow up with D N R to let them know what we've done. And we have since taken a sample in May and it's come back.
Yes.
Fine.
Yeah.
When I, we talked about input, but your sample was okay. So other than the sample that we have and delivered, it is. Time to do.
Right.
You cannot depend on the, you know, we do it for softness anymore.
So uh, real quick too, is there, is there a mechanism that we can put in place to make sure that we?
It's on, it's on Wednesday's calendar now, very much. And I believe it was on Jill's, but I do, you know, and all the. Yeah, I just didn't make mine check.
Change over.
You've been doing it for.
Always nice.
Yeah, so I just.
Turkey, my response is always about to read the backup plan. Get sure the package done.
All right. Maybe, uh. Eric can help you put a reminder on your phone or something, dude. He's kinda like the in-house thing, right?
Eric, we get him an email address and give it in, get it in Silver Smith, Silver Smith will automatically send him an email. Probably even get it to send him a text message.
Very technical, very technical, you know, email.
Very nice, yeah. Yeah, receive them all.
I don't think it'll send smoke signals or any of the craziness.
Also, a text message would be good then, right? As a, as another, like, necessary backup.
Yeah.
Because this is probably something we don't wanna have happen, you know, ever again, so. I mean, we call the slip up.
I mean.
Well, I, I know it's a slip up, but, I mean, you know, I. I don't know specifically, but. I'm kind of under the impression that this is a big deal.
Well, and it is, but, you know, we don't need.
Well, I understand that, but the, the point is, is. You know, at one point we were in hot water with DNR, we're kinda coming back into their good graces, so if we can. And eliminate any more slip ups, like, you know. To the best of our ability to where it's, we're running on ninety-nine point nine percent. Compliance all the time, then I think that'll continue. The trend of remosa, getting into the good graces of DNR and, and, um. And we can move forward with that, because, I mean, we, we've been waiting on. I'm not sure if it's them, but other state agencies, if not them. Some of the permitting for discharge and things like that for quite a while, so, you know, I think it, that we need to make sure that we, uh. That we do everything that we're required to do on time, you know, and, and I, I understand it was a, an oversight, and so. I think that if we all just work together, we can make sure that. That we, uh, that we don't have any more of those, so anyways, please make the joke.
Uh, C is the, uh, three contracts, you got a whole of that, and, uh. He is purchased of the. Crack machine and.
Yeah, we did, uh.
You know, without to, so. Yep, you know, it's the last time we do it, right?
All right.
I have a quick question, so now that they're winding down at the lagoon, wondering if you're gonna be able to. Work on work orders?
We've never stopped, you know, working on, it's just the, the top issue is kind of. That one is placed on. And some, some of those are strictly moving the remote, they're not unacceptable.
I'm talking about John's sewer.
Oh, I thought maybe.
That's been over two years.
Whoever.
Hello?
Uh.
Sorry.
It's still on you.
John?
On David.
I just wanted to say that, actually, you have the day wrong, it wasn't February twenty-three, it was February twenty-two. We're looking at three years.
Just a reminder, keep that on the top of your.
Yeah.
It's medium here, but it's gonna be high now that your one comes out. Oh, we were kinda holding on, fifty, fifty, but I don't, I get that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, we need to get that one.
On that, read that, one of Paul Kessner's. Reinstall parking sign, well, you know, we had those, we haven't had any issues. And he's. That's how, it, you know. It's, this will be here in fair ground.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yeah, I know, but I think, you know. It's. Nobody parks there, only at fair time, well, you know what, some, you know, fair time.
Yeah, they do park there sometimes and. You can stop and want the kids to play on the.
Yeah.
Uh, playground equipment and stuff, it, it, those signs were installed basically. For fair time because with. A roller traffic on both sides and people walking back and forth from which they pay no heed to the signs whatsoever. And, uh, one of those got pulled. Why, how, whatever, I have no idea. That's what he's referring to is having that sign. Where is it? It's on the east side. By the ball fields.
On the east side of Ferguson?
Oh, when the playground, is where?
I don't know if he backed off on that any at all, but it's been on. The honeydew list for quite some time.
Okay, well, that may be something we need to discuss in a work session at some point too, just to see. I mean, the utility of it, if the safety issue that those signs were addressing, things like that. Because we, we, we get our new mark for it. We'll be able to address things like that.
Yeah, but the sign post, I think, so. Anyways.
Okay, so I think that's all for you, right Chuck?
Yeah.
All right, very good, well, thank you very much. Moving right along to finance.
You can have the bank, uh, reconciliation and, uh, the monthly financial reports during the packet.
So, how are we doing, Terry?
I haven't sold that money. Yes, our budget is getting pretty thin.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to do a supplement.
Okay. I mean.
Well, we did get like, um. Some of our ARPA money I got. From some, we've gotten like, uh. A hundred and fifty thousand back, so. And I need to work on doing some more, I was kinda busy there for a while. I'll get after that again and submit some more bills to be sent, it's kinda got ninety back.
Okay, first contingent upon use of.
Yeah, because I get the bills to them after we pay them.
Okay.
Process, and it goes to the Black Hills Local Council of Government, and they. Kinda do everything and then they send them off, so it's a little bit of a topic, so. I will just.
Okay.
Um, I did want to, um. For Department, we did get a return spec from Progressive for the speed fine. So we got the three thousand two hundred sixty-five, which is what we paid for that, so that is now. Covered, which is nice. Do you have, um, in your packet, the, the Western Dakota Regional Water System is having a meeting. The closest one is June fourth, which is when our meeting is, fourth Thursday, fourth Thursday to six thirty, hot springs. Anybody? Been asking going to that?
Budget training?
Oh, no, for the Western Dakota. Regional Water, the stuff they have in there. It's an open house to learn about their plan to bring more water to West River communities.
Yeah. Think we have a long plan for that.
Um. And then it did get the end of the report. Then. So I will have a submission to, um. Let's play the audit, and then it will have, it'll also be published in the newspaper. I have thirty days to publish it and I have to have it to, let's say, water by the end of the month.
What exactly is this?
It's basically, you're starting, like, your cash, where you were at, all your revenues, less your expenses. And where you at at the end of it, in January to December last year. Like the twenty twenty-four.
So, so basically it shows the, the source of the money in our final fund at the end of last year.
Mm-hmm. Local.
Linda, still there?
I'm sorry.
I'm here.
So it's flipped it up by, you got general fund, the BBB fund, the TIF fund, the water and sewer funds. The second page just basically shows their revenues and expenses. And then those. Fund cash balances. Have to match in a second.
Good. Well, they can do that, Terry.
Yeah, I have to. Thanks for doing the job.
Always go.
And then we have, so Linda and I just look at the SDPAA, um, insurance renewal and. I think that's good to go, so I'll, I'll need you to sign that down.
Okay.
So I guess I just need a motion for that, I guess, too, that.
Okay, that look good to you, Linda?
Yeah. Yep.
Is it totally great?
And they, and they said as far as like the marshal and that stuff, to wait until we have to hire somebody. They said you never do that, we, because if something, if something happened.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So like our backdrop is on there, anytime we get something, and they're, they're putting the. The building down there and the wastewater treatment plant is all being at.
Okay, Terry.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. To approve the, the SDPAA insurance renewal.
My second.
Aaron makes the motion, uh, seconds, any discussion on that at all? Seeing none, all those on paper?
Hi.
Bye. Motion carries, all right, thank you.
And then I just have one, because I do have budget training, it's just in Rapid City on, uh, June eighteenth, which is a Tuesday, that'll be during the day, I think we have a. No, it's not a Wednesday. Wednesday, it's a Wednesday, it's Wednesday, the eighteenth, it'll be during the day, so it'll just be. I think the registration's forty dollars, right, so it won't be any travel cost, it's just rapid. Prove my registration for that.
I'll make a motion to approve registration for Terry's finance. Office.
Budget training.
Draining.
Okay, Linda makes the motion.
Actually, I got a question.
Okay, right.
Second, for discussion.
Stand a seconds for discussion, Erin, you may ask your question.
Is this an only finance officer's thing, or is this something that you would want at least one or more of us to experience so that we?
It says for elected officials, yeah, I didn't answer.
Yes. I'm wondering, do you think it would be beneficial for you if more of us knew this?
I think it's good, you guys could, yes, to make it go along, that would be awesome.
We think that's important enough that these are. More for accrual accounting than cash basis. Um, um. It seemed like they did a special one for cash.
Rod, Rod Portman does some, and he does some, he does both. Yeah. I got, I went for last year, it's very beneficial, but. We, tonight can always.
Forty dollars.
Ask a question. I need, so, yeah, so it's forty dollars for the registration, so.
And it's in Rapid City.
Yeah, so it's just. Usually at the holiday end or something like that.
Okay.
I mean, does anybody else wanna go?
Me.
It's an, it's an all-day thing.
Oh, it's usually, it usually starts like at ten or something, and it's done be, well before five, so. I think it's four hours, yeah, it's usually like four hours, I think they usually. I think they fed us last time, that was part of the registration.
Linda, any thoughts on this, on other board members going?
Well, I, I think if Terry thinks it's a good idea, then I guess I'm all right with it. Um, that being said, when is it again?
Wednesday on June eighteenth.
When does registration have to be made by?
Hmm. It's usually like. Week before or something.
Last day to register before the press was up at forty-eight is our next meeting.
June fourth, yeah.
Right now it's forty.
Yeah. Otherwise it'd be forty-eight.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I, I, I think that Terry should definitely go, and I guess. Board members wanna go and she's, uh, she thinks that's a good idea, have you ever seen any? Board members or other staff along with the finance officers when you've gone to the.
Well, no, I haven't, I went to the one last year and there wasn't anybody. Other than the finance offices there.
So maybe that's something that you should ask, uh.
The counties have a separate one.
Listen, it's not official though, right?
Yeah.
Somebody's gotta run the office.
Oh, yeah.
I've seen them occasionally. But that's just like Mary, Mary Jo wanting to go for the day.
And I know he usually does like a slideshow and he'll usually make that available, that information. That's certainly something I could share with the board too.
Right.
It doesn't matter to you, you're supposed to go, you know.
I don't need to go, I don't have a problem with Erin going if you want to go.
If, if you guys think that would be beneficial other than that.
Okay, any, any additional information you need? Yeah, so.
It's more on the income side of her.
I don't know anything about that stuff.
And don't worry about going, slit fairy tale.
Doing the budget.
Yeah.
What we're doing.
Yeah, I mean, if you think it would be useful to have board members know more about it, and.
No, yeah, no, it might be confusing.
It's not going with.
Okay, maybe.
This was my opinion.
Yeah, I'll stick with calculus.
Right, yeah. Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, it's been made and seconded, any further discussion? And this is to approve, uh, registration cost with Terry. Those in favor?
Hi.
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 Five eyes, motion carries. Uh, slight.
I put that on the twice, I apologize.
Yeah.
The.
The whole business is taken care of. Um.
Got that.
The new business. Uh, fourteen A. Request for, excuse me, ladies, request for the pillage reimbursement. Autumn eight, one fifty, rub three, number fourteen. It's a supplement that we, that's how combined with that. And so, um. You know, Terry, did you talk to her?
Yes, she called me after she saw the. Post on Facebook about how we forgave water bills and. Everybody should, if ever had a water leak, should call the town and request that there's been three first, so. That's what she's doing, so she, this person had a water leak. October of twenty-three, actually October, November twenty-three. And she was given a credit for the sewer side of that leak, it was. Twenty-five thousand gallons in October and forty, most forty-six thousand in November. But she was given ninety-seven dollars and thirty-five cents, but she had paid her bill. October third, which would have been the September bill, and then nothing got paid until. December, which would have included that credit. And I also did look, um. And she did not actually pay that, um, bill, Western Community Action paid it for in December, so.
So there's nowhere to reimburse.
And, wow. You'd have, if you're gonna reimburse, you have to reimburse.
Tried to explain to her that. There were different circumstances. Yeah, I mean, that's important project. Because of all of them in the consumption report and the missing water.
Yeah. Um, and I just told her, I presented to the board and we'll, and then when I call her back, I. Will reiterate some of that.
I'll be, my feeling on it is that there were. Different, different circumstances applied. Regardless of what she might read on Facebook, there was. Specific reasoning, then you can go and feel with me.
Yeah, I mean, she didn't, she herself didn't pay the bill. The department would recall these of. Community actions.
Right.
What is community action?
I mean, it's just.
Like an assistance program?
Yes.
You think they're gonna come knocking down our door to get reimbursed, because that's where the money probably legally would have to go.
Yeah.
Right.
Otherwise it might be a sort of misappropriation.
Right, yeah, well, um, in that regard, I, so, I think that it was a different circumstance altogether as well that you have a leak under your house, there could be a party, normal plumbing that's going through the functioning meter and it's being metered out. If nothing's done with that, then that's on the homeowner and we do have an account of the amount of water that was used and anything like that. There's, I think there's some large discrepancies between the two different situations here. So.
If it has anything to do with the money or who gets cheated about the circumstances. Not even.
Really, sure. Was this a water meter failure as well, or is it just a line break?
A line break.
Just so the water meter wasn't replaced in that situation?
No.
So it's an entirely unrelated scenario on pretty much every ground.
Yeah, well, actually, what happened was she had her furnace worked on and the guy is the problem around, I think it's created this connection to the heat tape. So it's always milk. Sounds like.
They've been a big fire.
If you need wants to take care of that, unfortunately, how could we? Okay, are we all satisfied? We can move on from this one?
The deny request, I think we should make, I think we should. I will make a motion that we deny the correct, the request for reimbursement based on the circumstances. This situation is completely different and separate.
Okay, Karen makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, sorry.
On the seconds, any further discussion?
Almost the amount of time, just two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I will abstain.
Then difference stands. More eyes. Motion carries. Uh, new business, fourteen B, approve application to occupy right away for Hermosa Huxters. Is that you, Leo?
I guess. Thank you, thank you.
Well, Terry had to sit through that whole thing.
I've, I've learned. Uh, I think you've got the last two pages over there. And I'll.
I'm also sure.
So I, I just, I guess that answers a question. Okay, so.
No, I don't. Is this, um, this like four H?
Four H? I missed the question.
The next, I'm saying.
My boxcar racing.
So by, you're.
Second annual.
Right.
Now?
Uh, but the, via change of route, it would be down the street right outside the building here. From, from, help me, somebody from Fifth Street to Second Street.
Well, I better speak that way.
DOT, yeah, we're hoping you'll. They didn't like me paddling by hand. They tried to get to finish line and never did. Uh, DOT has said that they have no problem with this. If it's approved by y'all, they're, they're good to go with it. Uh, they particularly liked that we had two alternative uh, detour routes, one on the north, one south on Whitney. Uh.
It's during twenty-four.
We would probably also want to, and all this doesn't show it on here, the first part of Second Street just south of the highway or south of Maine. We'd, we'd be wanting to turn in there, so. You know, that you're probably there in front of over that church group has that, the old American leaning, probably have it closed up there.
Turn out.
So then we can get, so we can keep that intersection open if somebody does come, you know.
What, is there a time on here or?
Oh, I, you know, I, I meant to look at, I forgot. It was planned from one until hopefully be done by two. So trying to keep it as short as possible.
During the part of the day?
I have another question, Joe. Question, are you going to have this road closed? Are you turning at seventy-nine?
Yes, you have to. They have to be closed right at the, not even. Sorry.
Otherwise, the traffic thing would have nowhere to go.
Right, yeah.
And you got to the homeowners here that wouldn't be able to get out.
Well, okay, when it's, when we say it's closed, it's closed to through traffic. But anybody that wanted to get through, the last year we did the same thing. Uh, among the homeowners wanting to get through, you know, we, we just shut it down and stuff.
I would just, yeah, didn't show anything on here about closing, yes, something that could concern you.
Yeah, I didn't make the math, so I, you said.
Is you, you're going to take care of the non-through traffic in the home? Will that be that for you?
Yeah, DOT, I'll just go on, Larry, well, required. Oh, Larry, I'm actually representing Larry Bailey. Who's been working with fifty. He good to you.
Okay.
Motion to.
David Chan makes the motion to approve.
A second.
Aaron, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Linda, did you vote?
Aye.
Looking carries.
Okay, great. Well, I might be asking for an email.
Yeah. I can do that, yep.
Awesome. Well, thanks for coming, Leo.
I thank you.
Thanks for, uh, helping to spearhead this event for our community.
Keep trying, one of you here is a winner.
Might need some thicker gloves. All right.
Better engineer.
Should we get Anthony on?
They have very crew.
I think you're opening the camera. Okay, we now go to item fifteen, items from constituents. Um, I think everyone is, you know, everyone knows how it goes, so constituents out there have any comments? Yeah.
I just want to kind of caution the board on some of your comments, words, uh, sometimes on speakers. And, uh, so it doesn't look any out to availability and I think just, uh, water testing is a little more than just, uh, overlap or a mishap. And not a big deal with the problems we've had with, the problems we're having about and the contractual side of it. But one of the most important parts of the job and for the public to be aware and this aspect is a real difficult situation, too. And we've had enough problems in the past with people questioning the quality of our water. And then when you mess up of this nature, it just raises that, they're backed up on all the back the particulars. So avoiding those other chances is pretty huge. I look very forward to the looks of them. Thank you for all your opinions.
All right, thank you, sir. Any, uh, any other items, any other constituents that might bring items up? Uh, Chuck?
Um, I didn't mention fair dollars, please, help me in the woods. I thought maybe that's why your, uh, that was a mouse.
Okay.
Anytime we get any moisture of the mouth and just turns to slop, and it's been very, very rough for the last and of course all those uh, little spots are holding water and just compounding the situation. Myself and the contractor and, uh, Anthony have been in conference over that, what should be done. It's going to have to be, uh, worked over pretty fair when I don't believe it's going to be an awful lot of heavy traffic in there now, other than the daily hauling equipment out, of course, well, you know, and the moisture content there is just very critical. It's, it's either like pavement or it's just sloppy and people are complaining about tracking the red stuff into their garages and all along. Uh, you know, it was, first it was a dust and now a mud. But that is being addressed by the contractors.
Okay. All right, thank you. See, John and Deb are in a silent, so I think we'll move on. So trustee, Aaron. Where you put?
Uh, me? Um. There was something.
You want us to come back?
Yeah, come back.
Just the input.
Are you asking me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I didn't hear that part of it. Yes, I have. I guess I would like to know if there's any way in the ordinance that's when it states or the regulations when it states that a board member get paid for a meeting, regular meetings at seventy-five dollars and special meetings at fifty dollars. If it says, oh, sorry about the dogs.
Um.
Um, like, like I was going to say, I, I would love it if it said, um, uh, phone call meetings or whatever, paid less than other meetings, um, than when you're present. Or, um, uh, something I think we should look into.
Okay. Is that it? Is that all?
No, long meeting, but a good meeting, thank you.
All right, thanks, Linda. Donna?
I'd just like to say, Terry, or comment, I meant to say, so, you know, I mean, getting a laugh, you know.
All right.
Not offended, Donna. I'm not offended.
You think comparison.
Are you, are you offended?
Chan, did you have any input?
Um, I appreciate the public's input. I do feel the, you know, the water reporting, everything needs to be done finally. I think it was well discussed. I don't think there needs to be any further action on it other than, you know, through the potholes and, um, I think, you know, just all of us agreeing to help keep them on track. We help keep each other on track. We should do it for, for the whole team and, you know, that means going in your, I know you buy a book that covers the whole year, so maybe when you find that letter that has the, whether a quarter later, biannual, annual. Add it to that, the email.
He fills that thing out every day about how the weather was that day, what the game was.
Anyway, yes. I agree, we'll get through it and, uh, there was one other thing. What was it after that? I mean, lose my train of thought. Oh, I think, uh, meetings over the phone, Linda, should be paid extra because it's hard to try to focus and concentrate and keep your ear to your speaker. Hear what they're saying. And that was kind of a joke, too.
Okay, Aaron, did you remember what you wanted to say?
Uh, yeah, I want to say I hope Linda's having fun wherever she is on the other side of this bond phone connection we have going on here. Um, uh, there's, there's one, one, one thing, um, I tried to do early in the year was to have a sort of work session just focused on economic development. Invite all the business owners. I think that's long overdue. Um, we, it kind of got replaced with something, God, God knows what. Uh, I want to, I want to do that, um, as a formal work session with the board here to just, for no other purpose, that work session, but to listen from the business owners, commercial property owners and people who are interested in economic development in Hermosa. And get one hundred percent on that. And, yeah, so I'd like to hopefully put that together in the relatively near future.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any input, so with that, um, if you all need to go into executive session, now's the time to make that motion.
I'd like to make a motion, we will do the executive session. I want to, we're going to discuss.
Following a two-minute rate?
Yeah, say, oh, you just say personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Uh, makes motion, Aaron, seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's do a, do a five-minute reset. We'll reconvene at nine twenty-nine.
Bye, Linda.
Oh.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Say that back.
I need a five minute break. And what a packet that was. Now I've got to find my other packet. I'm going to find my executive.
You got to tell me. It was.